All right. We'll now call a special meeting to order for the city manager interviews. Uh, he will open us with Denise.
Okay, just uh, explain uh, the council process.
Please.
Okay, Councilmember McGuire, your Councilmember McCarrick, your Councilmember England, your Deputy Mayor Benard, Mayor Anderson, we have a forum.
So each council member's been given a packet uh, with all three applicants' information in it. You have two copies of the scoring sheet for each applicant. One is to be a draft. So as we're going through the interview process, you can make notes on it, whatever you want to do with it. Uh, the other copy will be the final. Um, and I would like to have the final back from the council on Wednesday, so it can be a topic for uh, the next meeting.
So also voting today.
And uh, and then also you have a copy of each applicant's resume in there and the questions. So if you want to make notes on the questions too, you can. And that's it for the instructions.
We have no meeting, we have no meeting on Monday, right?
No, it'll be on the twenty-sixth after we've missed the meeting.
So, so like the mayor said, we won't be voting today. But we would.
You're you're in this discussion today, yes.
Okay.
No construction will happen after.
At very end, yes.
Good. All right, well, can we have the first? Get in if you're ready to begin. After they come in, if you will, shut that door so they don't get that reverb back there. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm great. How are you guys? I'm excellent. Yes, this is the hot seat, yes.
Something like that.
Either one, as long as no one is a draft that impacts the project.
Denise, you're gonna be asking all the questions to all that.
Yes. And with that, uh, we'll go ahead and get started.
All right.
Um, welcome and thank you for taking the time to come and interview for the town manager position. Uh, we are uh, limited to an hour, so we're gonna try to go quickly through the questions, um, asking that your answers be precise and as detailed and short as possible, um, because there are a number of questions. There's gonna be uh, twenty-eight questions.
Yes.
Now, Gavin Allen, okay. All right, so first question is what is your management style?
Yes, my management style bridges somewhere between transitional and servant style. So transitional being um, I get into the trenches with my employees. I will work with them if we need to clean out, you know, sewer drains. I've done that when a storm's coming, you know, put on your work boots, you're down on the ground with the employees. But transitional also to help them think outside of the box, to transition into new forms of management and ways and of thinking how we work through problems. Um, I like to say that we don't think outside the box, we just throw away the box. And uh, servant, I definitely give my employees the resources and the support that they need to be successful in their jobs.
All right. Uh, what would your priorities be for the first three months, six months or a year?
Sure. So for the first three months, uh, definitely getting to know all of the policies and important ordinances. I've started on that. I um, thought, okay, in my previous job, what were the three most important documents as the executive director? And it was the purchasing policy, which I've read through, the um, personnel rules and regulations, I've read through those, and the Sunshine Act. So I downloaded Ashley Moody's um, Bible to the Sunshine Act in Florida, and I've gone through that, which is significantly different than California. You would think it would be a little more lax here, but it's not at all. The answer is wide open.
They're they're the son of this.
Yeah, so definitely getting to know the policies, absolutely getting to know the personnel, and really start to drill down on things that can be improved upon, things that we can build on that are already really working, and that would be my first thirty, sixty a year.
Uh, how do you approach making decisions and solving problems?
Sure, so um, I'm a fact gatherer. I I really like to know the the realm that I'm working in. Uh, give a specific example, um. We had a drainage problem on March, and it was about a ten thousand foot earthen bottom channel that was owned by four different jurisdictions, and we were put in charge of making it workable. Um, so getting to know all the facts, uh, do we need four work permits? Um, what type of mitigation are we gonna have to do to clean out this channel? And then really targeting uh, all the other owners and bringing them into the fold. So get your resources, know the problem, and then have a plan of attack to solve it.
Denise, I think you missed number three.
What?
What's your philosophy?
What what is your philosophy of working with current and new staff?
Current and new, well, they're all new to me at this point. So, um, I'm going to assume uh, the current staff. They uh, what I've seen from watching sixty-plus hours of your council meetings already
I'm sorry.
Is that they're incredibly knowledgeable and super competent, and I'm excited to work with them and learn from them. You know, I don't come into this position acting like I know everything. Um, it's a team. So the current, and then if we need new employees, I I look forward to being part of that hiring process.
All right, the next group of questions is more operational.
Okay.
Uh, so we're gonna start with code enforcement.
Sure.
How important is the role of code enforcement? How important is the role code enforcement plays in the city government?
It, I, you know, I think they're very important. You know, you wanna have a city that people can be proud of, and you know, while it can be um, maybe punitive to some of the property owners, uh, we can also be a help to them. I've I've seen that your CRA gives SOD grants, and you know, we could be a resource to them and help them find um, opportunities to clean up their properties. I'm sure there's church groups that might go out and help the elderly. I've been involved with um, Habitat for Humanity going and painting senior citizens' homes that were um, having problems with code enforcement. Every chair is sinking.
There was a test.
All right.
He handles that area well.
Yeah.
Okay, um, are you a proponent of proactive code enforcement or complaint-driven code enforcement?
Uh, you know, I think you could have a good mix of the two. If if there's, you know, an egregious problem and you're driving by it every day, uh, yeah, you probably want to notify the property owner and see what can be done to clean that up. And also, you know, sometimes it's been raining a lot, and you can't get out to mow because the ground is just too wet, but you have those crazy strings of grass that grow ten inches, and the rest is like this big. People are calling to complain about that, you know. Maybe you let it dry out a little bit, and just notify them without an actual um, uh, fine or a violation.
Do you believe a code enforcement special magistrate should come from outside the area so the perception of favoritism to some residents they may know is mitigated?
You know, you could do that, and and I think any type of magistrate situation, you you're always gonna have somebody that's going to feel like they have been unjustly accused or violated for a situation. Um, it's six in one, half dozen in another. I mean, you're never gonna please everybody.
The next area is in regards to streets and stormwater. Should uh, what are the key elements that go into a stormwater program, and what benefits do they provide for our environment?
Sure, uh, you know, I Charlie warned me not to say I'm from California, but I am. And I developed out there for about eighteen years, so stormwater and roads, uh, a big focus out there, the environment. So, you know, you have um, your BMPs, best management practices. You uh, you need stormwater pollution prevention plans for your properties that are developing. That could be, you know, retention on site, metering out through different forms of gravel and to clean the stormwater as it hits the drain. Uh, big saying in California is only raining down the drain. Um, you need waddles out there, you know, it's a best management practice. If you're doing construction, you want silt fences to, you know, kind of keep the dirt out of the stormwater and keep your uh, stormwater system functioning properly. And obviously, you know, routine cleaning, that's that's very important.
Do you believe that the stormwater program should operate as a utility with its own enterprise fund, and what are the pros and cons behind the decision?
We did not have one that operated as um, a utility at March, however, the surrounding jurisdictions did. So, you know, the the pros are you have a dedicated funding source for it if you operate it as a utility. The cons are, you know, people are gonna complain about another tax on their property bill. Uh, if you're able to um, get away without the utility, you know, that might be the best way to go if you don't have a huge problem with your stormwater, um, if it can be managed as it currently is to acceptable levels. I did see in one of your council meetings, your lawyer was talking about um, new laws that are coming on the books in Florida that are gonna require additional cleaning and maintenance of your stormwaters. Um, I'm I think you're in the Okeechobee uh, drainage basin out here, so you know, I don't know if there's a regional organization that does manage that. I'd have to look into that further, but you know, they they might be a good resource to find out what the other jurisdictions are doing and how they plan on ramping up to meet the state's requirements.
And council, if there's any additional follow-up, just let me know. Yeah, stop me at any time along the way.
All right, thanks.
Okay, uh, still the streets and stormwater, what measures can be taken to help prevent sidewalks from being damaged or broken?
Yeah, um, you know, we had a big problem with um, trees being planted too close to the sidewalks, and you'd have roots come in underneath them and and start to lift them and crack them. Uh, that was a big problem for us out at March. We had this beautiful business park that they required magnolia trees to be planted all along it, and they eventually grew under there, so we came along and um, had this cool little machine that would pop up the sidewalk sections and kind of dig out underneath them and place them back. So that was one way to maintain the sidewalks. Um, I think uh, you know, your curb cuts, you wanna make sure that they're they're done properly, that you have the right um, what I wanna say, the right um, slope going into them so that you're not you're not uh, damaging your sidewalks as you're cutting new curbs.
I have one question. You used the terminology March a few times on this, so when you talk about the Air Force Base.
Well, uh, I I would love the opportunity to take like three minutes to describe what March was or is, if that's possible. Okay, so um, back in nineteen ninety-three, March Air Force Base downsized to a reserve base, and about seven thousand acres was declared surplus by the Department of Defense. So those seven thousand acres were given to the March Joint Powers Authority, which was an agency created by the four drowning jurisdictions of March. So it was the County of Riverside, the City of Moreno Valley, the City of Paris, and the City of Riverside. So I had two elected officials from each of those jurisdictions make up my governing board. So I have two county commissioners and two council people. So eight total bosses from four different jurisdictions, some really good at juggling people's priorities and wants and needs when they don't always align with each other coming from multiple jurisdictions. So we were tasked with developing that property, disposing of it, and basically creating a city from scratch so that when the property was built out, the local jurisdictions would annex it all, and and then March JPA would be dissolved.
Right.
So I hope that helps.
Thank you. So uh, now we're gonna go to uh, water and sewer.
Sure.
Describe your experience working with regulatory agencies and how you would convey the importance of compliance to the city council.
Okay. Water and sewer. Think about this, so I didn't have a whole lot of experience with the regulatory agencies. My experience in utilities with water and sewer is actually constructing the systems and then turning them over to the local utility. Uh, when March was downsized, we were transferred all of the old um, legacy systems, the water, the sewer, the water treatment plant, but we we actually sold it to the local Western Municipal Water District, and they took it over. But I do have a lot of experience in, you know, dealing with undersized antiquated property, uh, sewer lines, water lines. Um, our base, the northeast corner of it was built like in the nineteen twenties and thirties, and then the west side of it was all open areas. So having to build and construct with two-inch water lines and not meeting fire flow was always a problem. Um, we did put in a large PRV pressure-reducing valve, um, twelve-inch forty-three hundred feet of pipe to a homeless facility that was built for US vets. Um, prior to the PRV going in, we did require inline pumps to boost the pressure on the line so that they could get adequate fire flow. If there was ever a trouble, but specifically to regulatory agencies, no, but I'm sure that I can research that and figure it out, and you know, um, a brief account of accordingly.
Describe your experience with utility rate studies and what key factors go into determining the rate of water and sewer.
Sure, so we've done a lot of rate studies, um, not specific to water and sewer, but we've done fire assessment fees. Um, oh, um, we've done diff studies, um, development impact fee studies. So you always wanna look at what's the nexus for the charge? You know, what are your actual costs going into um, determining what the ultimate fee is going to be? So your labor, your manpower, your um, facilities cost. How much it, how much is it costing for operations and maintenance? And then you wanna break that down into a unit that makes sense for, you know, every gallon of water, how much of this cost goes towards that, and then set it according.
How does a right-of-way program help ensure proper planning and installation of utilities? And add any additional benefits you feel a right-of-way program provides?
Okay, so right of way. We have a lot of utilities, especially brand-new ones going in on the west side of March for that twelve-hundred-and-ninety-eight business park I was telling you about. So our streets were uh, dedicated for all the right-of-way for sewer, water, cable, um, our electric. Uh, it's important to have a dedicated space for your your utilities to go through. Um, you don't want them traversing areas that they shouldn't be. We we dealt with that a lot on the older side of March. If you've ever built on an old base, a military base, there's no such thing as a true-as-built. So you're trying to build something and you you run into utilities that aren't even on anybody's GTAPs or GIS or anything. So I'm a big proponent of a right-of-way program, and I I think it needs to be documented. Um, I don't know if you have a a strong GIS program for the city that has I know your city's a lot older, so those utilities have been uh, identified. That would be great.
They're they're working on it.
Okay, yes, it's an important.
It is complete, so.
Okay.
All right, next we're gonna look at solid waste.
Okay.
Um, what are the largest obstacles the city solid waste enterprise fund faces, and how would you address these challenges?
So I I've seen that uh, your treatment plant, the ponds, I I was going through the study that Kim Lee Moore says, so your ponds seem to be having a problem. They're not draining adequately. I just don't think, they're probably not large enough. Um, you have a lot of um, rags and trash, and that's a problem when you're trying to drain and they get in the pipes. Um, your septicage system, so the companies that are coming in and dumping off the septicage, I think you need new grinders out there. Um, how would I fix that?
So part of that. How would you address the challenges?
Sure, so, you know, money fixes everything, but where are we gonna get it, right? So, you know, I I I have looked at a lot of your fees that you charge. I I hate to say it, but I think I think they're a lot lower than even the surrounding jurisdictions, and I know you don't want to burden your um, citizens with additional costs, but some things just have to be paid for, and sewage is definitely one of them. Nobody wants their sewage pipes backing up into their house. I mean, that's that's an important piece of infrastructure that needs money.
Why do counties and cities contract out those solid waste services?
Well, I just don't want to deal with it. I mean, we we didn't contract out ours, but we had a dedicated um, Western Municipal Water and Sewer District that that took care of all that. So, you know, it seems like one less headache for the city council. But I will say, um, our tax system was a lot different than how you uh, do property taxes here. So the state of California had a Prop thirteen pass where it's just one percent of your value of the house goes into the property tax. You can't just set your own property tax. So out of that one percent, we had pass-throughs. So at March, you know, we gave multiple millions of dollars each year from our property taxes to the local sewer district to take care of that for us. I don't know if there's a system here where your property taxes could then go to an outside agency to pay for the sewage system.
It looks at solid waste, they're talking about garbage collection.
Oh, garbage. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, um. Why would they contract out? Okay. Well, same thing. I mean, we had waste management come in and take care of ours. We didn't have to run a landfill, even though we had several closed landfills on our site. Um, there is a headache to maintaining your your own um, landfill, your own waste disposal site. Um, you know, you have the problem of infiltration of dirty water that could get into your groundwater system. You gotta monitor for all that. We had monitoring laws around our um, solid waste or landfill. So, you know, that's just, again, one less headache for the city. Um, we we did have a charge on our property, on our parcel, specific to waste management picking up. So very similar, but just with trash, no, sorry.
What challenges do multifamily housing communities provide cities, and how would you confront these challenges? Still in regards to solid waste.
Okay, um. Adequate dumpsters. Uh, is there enough pla- uh, places for them to dispose of trash? Do they have enough pickups allocated to them because they are gonna generate more trash than, say, a single-family home? Um, you know, waste on-site, people not being as uh, conscientious about where they throw their trash. And if the bins full, they're just gonna throw it on the ground. Um, I would like to see, you know, their CCNRs before a multifamily housing project is approved in a city, and do they have requirements and um, mechanisms in place to address, you know, the cleanliness of their property and how they're disposing of trash?
Now we're going to finance.
Okay.
Have you reviewed the city of Avon Park's annual budget? And if so, what is your impression of our financial condition?
Sure, so I actually, uh, yes, yes, and yes, I did read it. I also called Mike Brindelson, I'm not sure how to say his name. Yeah, Brind- uh, he presented on your audit and talked with him for a few minutes about, and I gotta say I was super impressed that there's really, there's no doubt. I've I've never seen where a city does not carry any debt. I apologize for that, so that's amazing. Um, so to your your answer, yeah, the city's finances are very strong.
All right, describe your experience writing, being awarded, and managing grants.
Sure, um, yeah, I have written numerous grants, uh, Federal Aviation Administration, we got an eight-million-dollar grant to build a GA terminal and the associated um, ramp for it. We also had a million-square-foot ramp left over from the V-two bombers. We were joint-use uh, airport with the Air Force. Um, so we had multiple grants to um, some of the larger panels had cracked, and crap, to replace those with twenty-four-inch concrete. Um, we did some taxiway realigning, uh, written a grant and um, for that drainage channel I was telling you about earlier, through the Department of Defense Office of Economic Adjustment. Um, they gave us a thirty-five percent design grant for that channel. It's about a hundred and eighty thousand. Um, once the grant came in, you know, I managed it, I filed all the forms. And you can talk with Chris Scrindy up in Washington State. She gave us multiple grants for a four-lane regional connector to be expanded and upgraded, Van Buren Boulevard. It was a three-phase project. We got about two million for each phase from um, Economic Development Administration. So a lot of experience with writing and managing and closing out.
I have a follow-up question. You're talking about large grants for large groups of experience. When you break it down to the city of Avon Park, you know, we're looking for grant writers that can take care of utilities like water treatment plants.
Yeah.
Stormwater, stuff like that. Is that something that you can uh, realize that the importance it is to get right a grant that will give us the money to we need seven million dollars upgrade a water treatment plant. That's something you're capable of doing.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Denise, I'd like to think about it. You said you have a lot of experience in writing different types of grants, so you look like you've done a lot of research on the city of Avon Park. And so knowing that, do you believe that you, the types of grants that we would need, you believe that you would pretty much be able to write pretty much any type of grant that we would need?
The only grant I I saw that you have um, applied for that I do not have any experience in is the CDBGE.
Okay.
Yeah. But I did see you have a consultant that does that for you.
All right, describe how you would keep costs down but continue to provide service to residents.
Costs down, um. So services to residents being the utilities, um, costs down. Wow, that's that's a hard one in this this economy with prices going every day. But I will say, um, redevelopment was uh, abolished in California circa twenty twelve, twenty thirteen. They did away with it. And we had about twelve million dollars a year that we counted on for that money uh, to do our projects. And when that went away, I was forced to still make ends meet without that. So our member jurisdictions did not contribute to our budget at all, so I had to find ways to make money. So I'm used to operating in more of a private business sense where I didn't get a set allocation of tax money. I had to live off of our uh, rental fees. We had, our enterprise funds were very strong, so those monies were used to offset costs for residents, and you know, I'd look, I'd look to see what types of programs we could implement here to raise additional funds that unburdens the citizens from costs.
Now we're gonna ask some questions about the fire department.
Okay.
How do you plan to support the fire department in terms of funding, resources, and personnel?
Sure. So I saw that you're working on a fire assessment fee, and uh, that's a really good start to. And, uh, that's a really good start to getting cash for the fire department. As far as personnel go, I would look to the chief, um, to see what his needs are and see how we can fill those needs. Can you repeat that again?
Sure. How do you plan to support the fire department in terms of funding, resources, and personnel?
Yep, so, I saw that you are looking, or the chief is really interested in getting paramedics on each of the crews and how we could make that happen with the year's training program. And it would cost an additional ten thousand dollars per paramedic to get them trained. I think, though, in the long run, that's definitely a benefit to the citizens to have that extra, um, life care support at, at a quick response time instead of waiting for one of the very few ambulances in all of Owens County to make it up here to help them. The, um, population is trends on the elderly side, so I'm sure they get a lot of calls for service. Uh, I think the citizens would be supportive of the fire assessment fee, not on empty parcels, obviously, because we saw that when in council meeting, but otherwise. Uh, I, I think they would, you want their mother or grandmother or dad to be serviced adequately with paramedics on, on board.
Can you provide examples of how you have supported emergency services in your previous role?
So, we contracted, much like you do, um, with the county sheriff's department. So, as far as supporting them, um, it's a great story, so, we had an F-16 crash into our business park, um, and land in one of our buildings. Thank God, nobody was hurt. I was able to eject. Uh, fuel spilled everywhere. It did not ignite, it was in our, our detention basements, basins. We had, uh, a major northwest, north-south, I'm sorry, north-south freeway, the I-215 that ran right next to it. Think of, you know, I-95 or I-4. They had to be shut down for three days while they tried to find the ordinance that fell off the plane. So, supporting our emergency responders, we were out there twenty-four hours a day getting them pizzas, you know, water, anything they needed. We brought in mobile showers for all of the workers. I'm sure that's not what you're getting at, like how we support them, but, you know, it's the personal touch that counts. And I think, you know, they appreciated that. Um, our, our fire was also handled by the county. Um, we did donate a two-acre parcel for them to build a fire station. They haven't built it yet, but the land is there for them if they, if they need it.
How do you prioritize public safety, specifically the fire department, within the broader scope of city management?
How do you prioritize public safety? Well, I think they have to be adequately equipped. I see that you've approved a new fire truck to, uh, reach the taller buildings, which is great. We, um, had a five-story hospital and our local fire engines would come out and train on the five stories, um. You know, training is one. I think education, communication with the citizenry. I think, I think a lot of people just don't pay attention to the sirens. You know, it's, it's kind of, it happens so often with the, uh, lifesaving calls as opposed to fire response. You get a lot more of the EMS-type calls. And people see the fire trucks. So, I think, you know, an education campaign did, hey, you need to move over, you need to get out of the way. There's people that need help, and we don't want you run over. So, I, I like to communicate with, um, the citizenry. And to that point, um, I just want to mention that the, the three cities that I was responsible to, there were six hundred thousand people just in those cities. That's not even including the unincorporated county that was mixed in there. So, I'm used to working with a lot of people. And because March was such an historic treasure, uh, I was very much in the spotlight.
The next couple of questions have to do with the CRA. Have you had any experience working with community redevelopment agencies? And if so, please tell us what your involvement is. And if not, tell us what you know about CRAs.
Sure, so, like I said, we had, uh, redevelopment was a, a big program in California until some cities started to abuse it and, and do a lot of pet projects. And the legislature got upset about that and abolished them around circa twenty thirteen. But prior to that, in ten years' experience, uh, we had a very robust, like you said, uh, excuse me. We had an eight-million-dollar infrastructure program. And then we had an additional, um, four-million dollars in what we call low-moderate income housing funds. So, it was, the two projects were split between those. We did a lot of infrastructure, um, programs. We funded US Fed's Housing to the tune of eight million dollars. We, we did a tax allocation bond against our low-mod housing funds. Uh, we also did a twenty-million-dollar, uh, tax bond against our, uh, CIP funds for redevelopment. And that did a major interchange along that I-215 that I was talking about to feed our business park at Van Buren Boulevard. The homeless facility, US Vets, they're an amazing organization. We donated eight million dollars and eight acres to them. That water line I was talking about earlier, the forty-three-hundred feet, that was to support them. They now have, uh, four hundred homeless vets and their families, um. We also had, uh, low-mod funds that went to other homeless programs. We had, uh, Lutheran Social Services, Concerned Families, um. So, how did we involve the community in that? We had a lot of open house meetings, um, to discuss potential projects. And these were the projects that the community was interested in, in funding. So, um, you know, once we got their input, presented it to the commission, um, we, we had a lot of subcommittees prized of community members, not just for the C, uh, CRA, but also for, you know, our development projects, just to make sure the community was involved and added voice.
Denise, I'd like to think about that, I'm making, um, was most of this funding, um, granted?
No, it was tax funding.
Tax funding, and was any of it granted?
Um, for the US vets, no. And for the interchange, yes, we did get some Economic Development Administration grants for, to help, uh, the Van Buren widening that I was talking about earlier and also tax, tax increment funding.
Was it hard to get grants when you, when you gave a price for the points? Was it hard to get grants?
No, uh, I, what I, I, I do want to make a comment. I haven't noticed, and in talking with, uh, some of the stakeholders in the community, that there's a big, um, relationship between your city management and your local representatives, whether it's your federal representatives or your state or your county. I used to have breakfast quarterly so that I was always in their face. And they knew what was going on at March. And they'd say, oh, hey, we have this notice of funding availability coming out. Here, go, go apply for that, we'll give you a lot of support. You know, so, I, I was very much in tune with the federal departments. Uh, I would go meet with them annually up in DC. That was part of our legislative agenda. I'd take several of my commissioners with me, and we would go to the different departments and just, you know, be in their base, and then they won't give you money.
Uh, what is your understanding of allowable expenses for CRA budgets?
You know, that's a great question. So, from what I've seen on your CRA, it looks like you do some facade grants, um, some park improvements. I, I see that you're struggling with whether or not you can do monument signs. Uh, I think you're still waiting for an opinion from your legal counsel on that. But in looking at other CRAs throughout the state of Florida, they seem to be doing that with no problem and some other things. So, I'm, I'd like to look into that further because I think you're a little hamstrung on what's being done with your CRA. I think you could do more.
I'd like to think about it.
Yes.
So, I heard you said earlier that, you know, you had this CRA in California and people start misusing it.
Yeah.
So, when you said that, you know, we've been told that too, of, you know, from our legal counsel.
Hmm.
So, why is it that you feel as though that they was misusing in California, but they're not human in the state floor?
Well, it wasn't my opinion they were misusing it, although there were some crazy projects, uh, like upgrading multi-million-dollar, uh, golf courses in Palm Springs. They did not need, you know, redevelopment money. They were, they had strong coffers. So, it was, it was kind of pet projects like that that got redevelopment in trouble in California. But here, um,
I don't, I'm sorry, what are some of the things here that you've heard in the meetings that you think, that you think personally, that we could use CRA money for?
I think your monument signage, I think, you know, wayfinding. I think you could do a walking tour. I think you could do improvements to your park facilities. I see no reason why, I mean, that's, those are dollars meant to improve, you know, what the public uses. And they're using it. So, why wouldn't those be acceptable? And, uh, to be honest, I, I have not drove down on the actual statutes for Florida. It's on my list, I just didn't get there yet.
Alright, so, the next, uh, few questions are, uh, questions provided by the council. Um, so, the first one is, can you provide examples of successful economic development initiatives? You have been involved in promote growth and sustainability within the city.
Sure. We had a great program, um, we called it MARS. We're just trying to go with the outer space theme and the Air Force. It was manufacturing, aerospace, research, and science. And what we did was, um, we had a company, General Atomics, that was working on the MQ-9 Revers. And we were trying to get them to March, they were down in San Diego. And we also had a fabricating company, AMRO, that was actually, uh, on our airfield working on the JPA side. And we thought that would be a great marriage, you know? So, what we did was, we went to the local community college, we went to the local university, and we brought everybody to the table, and K through twelve, we brought them also. And we sat down with them and said, hey, how do we make this a more attractive place for these manufacturing, these high-dollar jobs to get here? And while we didn't get General Atomics to locate, to March at their site search, we did end up getting a welding company, um, a welding school, a non-destructive testing school. They did non-destructive testing and welding. And we married them up with the community college and with the high schoolers. So, high schoolers are getting this awesome education. And then they were being filtered into AMRO as soon as they graduated, making high-dollar jobs without having to go to college. So, that was a, that was a huge boom for us. That was an awesome little program that we put together. Um, as far as economic development, I mean, I think my numbers speak for themselves. We, uh, created over eleven million square feet in projects while I was there, created ten thousand jobs, um, have the numbers for how much we generated for the local jurisdictions. I think it was like six million dollars for the county, just in one year, twenty eighteen. Um, the school districts, like I said, they got their cut out of our property taxes, called it pass-throughs out in California. Millions of dollars for that. Anyway. Don't want to run out of that. I'm sorry, um.
So, the, the next question, what are your thoughts on having an assistant city manager? And explain how that position would work in tandem with your role at fire.
Sure, so, I had an awesome deputy director out in California. And he did a lot of the, um, project level, you know, uh, things at March. So, he worked on the drainage projects and kept me abreast of them while I was busy getting the money for the jurisdiction. You know, doing the higher-level things. So, if you can have a strong assistant city manager that you can rely on to do the more task-oriented focus of the job, I think it, it really frees up my time to be the face out in the city, to be able to meet with the legislators, to find that money, to, you know, have a good reputation for the city, to serve you all in your positions and be able to have that time to give you the information that you need to make decisions with, for the city.
Think about, think about, what was the name, that, the title that you guys had in California?
I was the executive director and, uh, deputy director.
Deputy director?
Yeah. It's the same thing as assistant city manager. It would be analogous.
Okay, I have a question, and, um, to dig back on that one also. Um, how do you feel about succession plans for other directors? Not necessarily city manager and deputy city manager.
Mm-hmm. Uh, you know, I think that would be a discussion to have with each department and who they think would be, or not even the person necessarily, but the position that they would like to see, you know, grow, to take on additional responsibilities and learn the director's job. You, you always need a backup. You've got to have a depth of field. I mean, if somebody gets sick, they get hit by a bus, and they're no longer here, God forbid. But, you know, things happen, and you need somebody to step right up into that, that role seamlessly. And I, I think it's very important.
I just have one follow-up question too. So, how would you describe, I would say, percentage-wise, how much you anticipate being on-site as the city manager? I know you mentioned the deputy in your previous, um,
Yep.
experience handled most of the tasks. So, would you say you were more off-site?
No, no, I, I'm sorry, he didn't handle all the tasks. Just, you know, some of the projects. I was there all the time. Um, if I had breakfast with, when I had breakfast with the legislators, it was before work even started. So, we would meet at six-thirty in the morning. I had no life. I warped.
I like that.
Constantly, I was always there. So, I, I didn't want to make that impression that I wasn't.
Please, please, one more, one more, please. Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
We, we, here in Avon Park, we're a small city.
Yes.
And we don't have that, what you call that, big budget, you know, like in California. So, when you make the decision that you think that it would be great to have a, a assistant deputy director, we're always looking at our budget here.
Yeah.
And so, that means, that's another, that's another allocated, you know, payday. So, are you taking that in consideration that, you know, what you're asking for is pay? Because what you're asking for, we, I think I can speak to most of us. We're saying that, that is all, all the descriptions that was falls under that. But if you're gonna ask for an assistant, you know, are you willing to take a little pay?
Well, let me say this, yeah. I did not have a big budget in California.
Okay.
You guys actually have a slightly larger budget than I had.
Okay.
So, I have the numbers here. I think I was running at about thirty-five million, and you guys are at forty-some. So, that doesn't, I, I don't want to give you the impression that I just am out there doing this all the time. Because I'm not. But, yeah, we can always make it work.
How would you motivate and inspire your subordinates to facilitate a rewarding culture to all within the city?
Ah, yes. You know, I, I challenge you to call any of my former employees. Uh, we had a great working environment, um. I think, as the leader, you want to inspire division. You know, we're here to make this a better place for the citizens of We're here to make this a better place for the citizens of Avon Park, and I take great pride in that. Uh, like I said, I am down in the trenches with them. I will say when I retired, four of my directors left because the culture became so toxic with the next person. I. Walk about, I don't sit at the desk constantly, I want to go down. To the streets department. I've already talked to some of your maintenance workers. I was walking down the road and said, oh, hey, Daniel Kelly, I'm applying for the city manager. I mean, people I'm sure in this town already think I'm crazy because I'm just talking to them constantly.
Uh, people skills, also known as interpersonal skills, are skills that help you work well with others. Now, give us some examples of your people skills.
I think I'm very approachable. I like getting to know people. My people skills, um, I'm very encouraging, I'm helpful. If you have a problem, I'll sit there and listen all day, try to find a solution for you. Um, I'm, I'm not judgmental if you have issues, you know, eh, at home or. You need that extra time, get your kids to school or whatever, you know, I, I understand. Uh, I was a mom at one time, so I'm technically, but they're old, so. I think you have to really treat people with respect. Everybody's different and you need to meet them at where they are in life.
I can follow the question on that, but then how would you go about, about balancing? Those qualities that you just listed, but then balancing that with effective.
Sure, discipline, yes, yes, yes. Uh, I, I have had to do that certainly, um. I had two ladies, younger gals, uh, that were intimidated. We would sit in these developer meetings with, you know, Amazon and big companies that just want to push you around constantly and. They would get upset and they would start to cry. And, you know, I just, I couldn't accept that and so. I, I took them to lunch and I said, look, uh, for multitude of reasons. It's, first of all, it's unprofessional, second of all, you're giving women that name by crying in the meeting, there's no crying in baseball, right? So. I tried to go that route first and I said, if you're feeling upset and you can't control yourself, excuse yourself from the meeting. Go compose yourself and come back. That worked well. Uh, I've had other times where I've absolutely had to write people up for being inappropriate or getting. You know, just messing up on the job, you know, they weren't there where they said they were going to be or. They used their phone for personal stuff that they shouldn't have been, not just a phone call to their wife, but just, you know. Blatant misuse of city property. And you have to write them up and it's a professional interaction and I'm always professional with my staff. So there's, there's that line there, they know that, um, even though I am friendly and approachable, they know that I'm still gonna.
Any other questions from the council?
Uh, just one question, what would you say is your strongest attribute and weakest attribute?
My weakest attribute, I have a horrible time with names. So it'll take me a while, I know all yours because I've watched you for quite some time now on the videos, but. I, it, yeah, that's, that's a tough one for me. I don't know why I have a mental block with people's names. My best attribute, I, I'd say I'm, I'm super adaptable. Kind of chameleon, if I can, you know, I feel just as comfortable in the boardroom as I do walking storm drains, you know. Super adaptable.
Anything else from council? Do you have any questions for council?
I do, I haven't been able to find it. What is your mission statement?
Like we've ever come up with one as a board.
I will have to hit that.
Generally, uh, once a year or usually whenever there's a new council, uh, whoever's the city manager at the time will kind of go over that and kind of talk about it. At our first meeting or we're assigned board and whatnot, but as far as actually a in set in stone mission statement, to my knowledge, it's never been done.
Ours at March was bringing good jobs to Riverside County.
I'm okay with that one.
Thank you so much for your time, thank you.
Two minutes away.
We can go ahead and create a few minutes if you have any notes you want to jot down or.
We did, we did minutes in the spare. I was watching my flag.
Thank you.
Does anybody need anything?
And a water.
You brought the donuts. We need coffee, water. Is it still recording? Is that the one camera? Oh, it doesn't see the face.
Yeah. I tried. What about it?
Efficiently. As soon as you see Brittany walking and Jim walking, whoever's last.
Your reminder, be careful of the cords, you know, and you don't give her to.
I'm gonna give myself a coffee, but it's not to get in here.
Morning. Hello, everybody. Thank you so much for helping.
So all the questions will be asked by our human resources, Miss Denise. Anything preliminary you'd like to get into or? You're ready, we'll get right in.
We're gonna try to keep it to an hour. You ask that you answer as precisely and, and detailed as possible, but look that in case of a situation. All right, so first is what is your management style?
I'd say my management style is collaborative, uh, and encouraging. Uh, in my experience, um, in working with different municipalities. Uh, the concept of an employee who's underperforming often means the manager. Needs to see what they can do to reform that employee and encourage them. I, I found that someone who's traditionally been a C minus employee. Can be a B plus employee if you give them the tools and the encouragement and the opportunity. Oh, that doesn't mean there is a red line somewhere. Uh, where people are underperforming, haven't reached the point where they need to, uh, be shown the exit. But I found almost all the time, uh, you can take an approach. You know, the old days of the autocratic manager, those days are gone, you know, the, um. The Woody Hayes concept of coaching a football team, where it's my way or the highway, get the heck out of here. Um, those days are gone, um, but using an encouraging approach, especially. Giving, there are a lot of legal pitfalls these days, you know, you can't manage people, you know, certainly say, I don't mind what you did today, goodbye, you're fired. You have to keep a file and have something called graduated disciplinary activities. Um, but my, my style's collaborative from that standpoint. In terms of legislative body, it's especially collaborative. Um, I, I think you should know that my management style, such that you're the boss, you set the policy. Think of me as a terrific tool. You went on the internet and you're trying to find the set. Right kind of tractor for repair of your roads. Uh, and you find one that's a pretty good bike, but it's got all these extra features as well, but somebody's got to drive it. Somebody's got to put those tools into, into practice. Um, I will present you with new ideas, new concepts. Um, if I have a flaw, it will be that my management style may be over-communicative, and that means with you. And I served as a member of council originally at the beginning of my career. You want to do, I'd say read the newspapers those days, but this time find it on Facebook, something. Where you don't want to pick up the phone and say to the, the manager, why didn't I know about this? I haven't time, why didn't I know that? So it's collaborative. Um, and that also means though, um, that as new ideas and new concepts come forward. I will present them to you and then you make the decision. But you may sometimes grow a little bit weary because I discover some issue or something I've had some experience with over different municipalities. But I want you to consider and I'll present it to you, maybe the dumbest idea in the world, but. Consider it and then toss it out, my feelings aren't hurt, but I'm not afraid of being proactive, presenting. We may hit upon something that's, uh, that's very effective. Uh, and if you're not given that opportunity, uh, the lesser effective you are as elected official. You can't know everything and I certainly can't know everything, but collaboratively, uh, we can find ways to solve problems.
What would your priorities be for the first three months, six months or a year?
Okay, um, well, I talked about the communication piece of things. And so my priorities would be to make sure we have a good handle on financial aspect, but listen. Municipal management, it's not rocket science, you're running a business and you want to make sure that the business is run in such a way. That's financially cost-effective. Uh, one of the most important things I dive into is, is the topic of grants. That's what I'm doing right now, I'm a grant writer. Uh, and since the passage of the Inflation Reduction Act, which used to be called Built Back Better. But to pick up Republican votes, they renamed it the Inflation Reduction Act, there's almost a trillion dollars. In, in grants that municipalities can tap into and I've looked at your grant record here, uh, and it's, it's okay. But your grant record is maybe a B minus, a C, and the reason is. Federal dollars have generally speaking some set criteria to get that money. And you guys are in the sweet spot of the bat. To get much more money and mostly it's because your demographics economically and racially. Put you right, uh, you're a stand at home plate with a fastball you can hit coming right down the pipe. And I don't believe in farming out grant writing in my municipal career, I believe in keep it, don't farm it out to some other private grant writer. I am now, who's working for other municipalities or has different priorities, but also doesn't have the familiarity. With your particular needs and the ability to bird dog the grant, I want to talk about bird dogging the grant. Grant writing is not a mystery. Bird dogging a grant means that when you, you have such a familiarity with the federal authorities as I do. Uh, in the different levels of authority, that you start talking to each other on the phone. And so somebody from the grant issue authority called Memphis Dave, made that six hundred thousand dollar application, but. You know, that road doesn't meet the width requirements that we have. And so we may have to turn down the grant, so hold on a minute, let me get ahold of the engineers and then talk to legislative body and talk to the mayor. We amended the grant application to change the width requirement and now we're getting the grant. And, yeah, there's, there's back and forth, you don't get that as well by having an outsourced grant writing. Because they don't have the ability to react quickly, maybe in a day's notice to make an amendment and let everybody else know what's going on. And you can have great success, and this community should have much greater success, much greater success. I'll tell you right now, you're going to have a lot more money to deal with, uh, if you give me the opportunity. Uh, I like grant writing because again, everything's just this mysterious thing. It's diligence, stick-to-it-iveness, and one other element, I'll talk about it, and then for infrastructure, it's engineering. If your engineers are right on target in terms of the estimates, you have good engineers. And in terms of completion dates, you not have a reputation where you're earning more future points for future grants, you're going to get even more money. Because you're bringing things in on time, uh, you know, we've offered the political folks, talk about things that are shovel-ready. Um, uh, that's how you get grants and breaks my heart when I was president of municipal in Ohio. There's this one community whose infrastructure needs and operational needs were off the charts. But they weren't connecting with appropriate engineering firms. And so their scores weren't that great and they weren't getting these, and they needed more than anybody else. Uh, another element of bird dogging, some of the authorities that are making determinations on your grants, they have their own evaluation committees. And sometimes you can go to their meetings and sit there while they're doing the evaluation. Believe me, it, it has an impact, so you're, you are in for, and should get substantially more money in this community. So that's right at the beginning, I talked about the financials. The good housekeeping civil authority for municipal finances is something called the Government Finance Officers Association. They offer something called their certificate of achievement and every community has that certificate of achievement. Actually has a better shot at grants because a lot of things they look at is your financial responsibility and accountability, they look at that nearest course. You have not been a member of the GFOA, I did my research, it's two thousand and nine. And I know there's some small communities, well, it's a hassle, we don't really want to apply. The membership for this community would be four hundred and sixty dollars a year. And then to apply for the certificate of achievement is six hundred dollars. It puts you in a category, uh, a, a very separate category in terms of transparency. And by the way, you're eligible for that, I'll tell you right now, because your financial management is pretty good. Your last audit had only one material citation, only one. But the audit prior to that from the state of Florida had four. And things were done to address those four material misrepresentations in your audit and they were corrected. The one that you did have your last audit was relatively minor. Uh, and certainly I know, uh, that you would fit within the category to earn the certificate of achievement, have this blue ribbon seal. A lot of small communities don't go for it, but makes a big difference, so those are just a couple of things, obviously I want to learn who the. Talk to the workers, when a new person comes in, one of the things the employees think the most is. Alright, so this guy is getting shot, everybody's heads off, you know, there's a new manager in town. Um, uh, but my philosophy is work with everybody and make them as productive as possible, so. I guess that gives you a little insight into the beginning period of time.
And that, that's a good segue into the next question, what is your philosophy of working with current and new staff?
Okay, uh, well, I guess I have sort of stated that already, um. I believe in staff meetings at eight o'clock in the morning every Monday. And everybody sits around at a table like this and it's kind of, it can be sort of a come to Jesus moment where people share their problems. Uh, and you'd be surprised how somebody in the department. And you'd be surprised how somebody in department A has a little insight in the problem that somebody's having in department D. And by the way, those are confidential meetings. So people can unburden themselves. And sometimes there's an occasion where after that meeting's over, I need to speak to this particular department head. And talk about a way I can help find a solution to the problem that they're having. I will learn every single, you're small enough, I can learn everybody's name on the first basis. When I was mayor in Euclid, that was the case, a strong mayor from the government. We had six hundred employees. I knew everybody's name on the first basis. It took a while. But you take a personal interest in people and then the whole team is rooting for for one of them.
How do you approach making decisions and solving problems?
You gather information. You evaluate that information. You ask for outside opinions. And of course, you know, policy wise, this year the policymakers communicating. So you don't go off half cocked. Let's say I have some particular idea and I have the executive authority under your charter to implement that idea. But I should be conferring with you because you know your 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 constituents. And it might be the greatest idea since Sly Sprint, but. Councilman Taylor, you know that there are people within your constituency that have reasons why maybe it's not a very good idea. So the process is sort of a two step. I will say this thing, though, when a problem festers. Well, the worst decision you can make is not to make a decision. And you've all seen that. Where almost no decision is made and things are put off. And then the problem sometimes gets worse. So make a decision in an informed way. Make sure there's an understanding and input so that it's it's something that doesn't catch people off guard. And then do your darndest to successfully implement that decision and make it work.
The next group of questions are arranged to different departments. So we'll start with code enforcement. How important is the role code enforcement plays in city government?
Yes, what code enforcement is to some extent, if I might put into more familiar terms. What's the impression people have of their community? Let's say I walked in here and I was wearing a pair of ripped blue jeans and, you know, the the. The, you know, a Def Leppard t-shirt or something like that. And I don't know conclusions you'd reach about that, but if you drive on your community. The beauty of your community aesthetics is an impression other people have of the community. It's a form of public relations. So code enforcement is important. I was the code enforcement prosecutor for the city of Cleveland. On the other hand, as important as it is, you want to find solutions to code enforcement. So you always, I talked about grants, you want to find sources that can also help people that may not be able to address a code enforcement problem. If there's a little old lady whose porch is falling down and she's on social security. Giving her some kind of criminal citation may be a horrible knee jerk way of responding to that. You can attract more flies with honey than vinegar and you have to find a way of. Always have your back pocket on code enforcement, some kind of handy solution. Whether it's, you know, going through the county for community development block grant money, which you can get for some code enforcement issues. Or ask the city council to help set up an assistance fund. Twenty percent of the residents of this community who are in the last census live at or below the poverty level. Personally struggling to pay for the prescription of food. Isn't worried too much about repairing the shutter, but you're responsible for what people think of this community. You know, one of the poor tastes I've described in my resume is economic development. How your community looks. I've dealt with private job creators. And if they have this sort of Gestalt method of evaluating the community and and they think it doesn't. Doesn't look the way they want to look because of some code enforcement issues they identified. That's not gonna help you. So. You know, beautifying your community, that's really the goal, beautifying your community with code.
Are you a proponent of proactive code enforcement or complaint driven code enforcement?
I'm definitely a proponent of proactive code enforcement. Complaint driven. Means that if a complaint isn't filed, that I SOR continues to exist. It also means that you're sort of putting the burden on your constituents to identify the issues. And that's unfair to them. You've got a great relationship with your next door neighbor and a a problem. You might be hesitant to identify the fact that there's an automobile. Up on stilts and it's been there for four years and it's in the front yard and it's rusting away and Mabel next door is your best friend. No, I believe in proactive, again, with a sense of compassion and providing solutions. That's that's the way to go.
Do you believe a code enforcement special magistrate should come from outside the area so the perception of favoritism to some residents? They may know is mitigated.
Well, there's a pre programmed question that somebody specifically featured for this community, I could say quite obviously. Objective outside eyes. Almost always help provide a better measure of whether somebody is appropriately adjudicating these things. So I suppose if you you had a choice, I would say the outside management part is is better, but. I also can't believe that you don't have within your own community. People that respond judgment calls that have been made. I'm looking at a whole bunch of them, sitting at this table right here. You can't give everything to all your constituents and sometimes you have to make a decision that some like and some don't like. So, but the outside methods probably.
The next area is in regards to streets and stormwater. What are the key elements that go into a stormwater program and what benefits do they provide for our environment?
Well. I would go the end of that question because sometimes the benefits are just for the environment, although they're certainly there. It's there for community. Where there are standing water problems because of storms and flooding, it's a problem for your own residents. And water retention, water detention is very key. The main key to that for it being successful, of course, is. Good stormwater management engineering, excellent engineers. And, you know, I don't want to be a little Johnny one note where everything leads back to grants, but. You're gonna get a lot more infrastructure grants if they're they're bird dogged and applied for. And water retention, because of the fact that it does have environmental impacts, gets you more points at the federal level. So engineering is certainly right, right at the top of the list. And. The thing is you have to be careful of that, that engineering solutions sometimes take time. So you have to make sure that citizens understand that. But, you know, sometimes there are some Band-Aid solutions that you can come up with. Flooding and stormwater issues are especially predominant in Florida. Usually I represent commercial developers, you know, in Tyler County, so I did most of my work in Florida and. Having good stormwater planning is is essential. And again. It it's mostly the main beneficiary beneficiary of that is is your resident.
Do you believe that the stormwater program should operate as a utility with its within its own enterprise fund? And what are the pros and cons behind your decision?
The answer to that question is generally speaking, yes, I do believe it should. And the reason is enterprise funds. Generally speaking, are funds that stand on their own two feet. And therefore they're less likely to be subjected to the whims and influences. Political activities get bowled down in in budgets. Well, you have a number of enterprise funds here. And one of the benefits of having enterprise funds is under state law, they stand on their own two feet. So they have to be independently productive. And have rates that reflect those activities independently. And I I think that's always, it's it's a better plan. A lot of states even have laws, your sewer departments make an awful lot of money, but you can't camp into that for your general fund. You have to stand on their own two feet. And that also helps the rates to be something that's realistic for your residents to understand. If you've got an intermixing, the rates that your residents are paying for whatever program. Are gonna be ones that they've got some question about if you've got a code meeting. So I believe in the independent structure.
What measures can be taken to help prevent sidewalks from being damaged or broken?
How to stop sidewalks from being damaged or broken? Well, you need to have a regular sidewalk program. In your community to the extent that wherever you do have sidewalks and they're required. But normally that's protected by your ordinance structure here in the community. I did not look at your sidewalk ordinance as relates to it, but repair sidewalks on a general basis. If if it's done on a wide enough scale, you can provide a lower rate, but the individual that are responsible for it. It it almost like we talked about code enforcement a while ago. You want people to be proud of their property and you use the encouraging system. And sometimes that's requirement. Ultimately, you get to the point where you have to issue some kind of a citation. But sidewalk is part of the aesthetic beauty of the community as much as anything else.
Alright, the next area has to do with water and sewer. Describe your experience working with regulatory agencies and how you would convey the importance of compliance to the city council.
The importance of complaints. It's an interesting way of putting it, just EPA will sue you if you don't comply. So. How important is that, huh? And by the way. Having been the mayor in a community, a strong mayor, former government, in which the EPA filed a suit. Because the the wastewater treatment sewer system was throwing fecal matter into Lake Erie. Well, put it this way. They'll name you members of council and the mayor, they'll name you as defendants in a federal lawsuit. They'll put your name on it. Even if it had nothing to do with you, when I was first elected mayor in Euclid. Previous administration, they throw their stuff into the, and they had filed a lawsuit against the name of the mayor as a defendant. When I got elected mayor, they filed an amendment to the lawsuit and named me as a defendant. So my wife and I are at a car dealership buying a car. They get all the credit management, so, well, Mr. Look at your credit, it's great. What's this two hundred million dollar lawsuit where you're named a defendant? So you take it very seriously. And I consider myself to be one of the world's greatest experts at dealing with the EPA. And environmental water issues and sewer issues. My last gig, so to speak, in Newton Falls. We had this remarkable problem that came to my attention within a few weeks of being the new city manager. And that was they were pouring fecal matter into the river, the Mahoney River, which is the main river in northeastern Ohio. And shockingly, a judge had issued a consent decree. Ordering correction of this problem by the wastewater treatment system. And everybody just sat around and did nothing. Sat around, did nothing. And I know how the EPA works. They were getting their long knives out. And so I went to the council, we don't want to spend the money or change it. You're all gonna go to jail under a federal contempt. You want that to happen? How is it that nobody else saw this problem before I came along? By the way. The environment ultimately got protected and the residents, and that river is where we got our water source. For our water department on top of it. Take it very seriously and I'm used to dealing with the federal authority. And by the way, if you're proactive, we're talking about a management staff. If you're proactive, they'll talk to you. And you can find the problem ahead of time and solve it before it comes down the road and hits you with the head. So the EPA stuff is especially important for your water and especially important for your your sewer, your wastewater. So highly important.
Describe your experience with utility rate studies and what key factors go into determining the rate of water and sewer.
Okay. Well, there's good news and bad news on utility rate studies, and that is there are water sewer utility firms. That do rate studies. In fact, in Newton Falls, we also operate the electric. And there are there are firms that are highly trained, have the experts and they. They determine the rate studies. And then you present your council. By the way, you better have that. Rate study in your hand because the council, is anybody here like to increase rates? Anybody? Does that improve your political capacity here? I don't think so. And so those are very important. I talked to all the importance of good engineers. That's where it's really important. However, we're all the way back to the beginning. That's where the grants, infrastructure grants come in. And the inflation reduction has especially more points. For areas that are related to things that will protect the environment, sewer, water and so forth. And. Of that inflation reduction act's money, only twenty percent has been distributed. So even if in November we have a change in Washington, that legislation is not going away. It actually has Republican support because everybody wants to, I don't know what a country should last, say. We brought money home to the district. Let's take somebody like me who collaborates with you to go out and get it. But it's. It it's important.
How does a right of way program help ensure proper planning and installation of utilities? And add any additional benefits you feel a right of way program provides?
Well, obviously, a right of way program gives you access that you need. So if you're gonna properly maintain utility, you better, let's say you don't have a right of way and you're trying to deal with the utility issue. Usually utilities aren't in place unless you have an effective right of way program. Now, I will tell you this, a lot of people don't like big brother government getting into their lives. And they look at right of way programs and another way for government to insinuate itself into your property rents. But we look at a community. And we have responsibility to each other to have. Your yard be part of the solution to your next door neighbor being able to get their water or or drainage or something like that. So. The right of way programs are important, but you know, you need to handle things in such a way that's. Makes the community feel like you're being collaborative with consulting with and informing them. And communicating with them on a regular basis before you launch into something.
Next area has to do with solid waste. What are the largest obstacles the city's solid waste enterprise fund faces and how would you address these challenges?
I haven't evaluated your solid waste enterprise fund in terms of its financial situation. But I can tell you that having negotiated a lot of solid waste contracts. You know, solid waste, if you turn the clock back thirty or forty years, almost every municipality had solid waste pickup by municipal employees. And then communities began to see that they could save money by contracting out to waste management to be a fire. Or or some other firm. However, your citizens are paying a fee. So you have to be aggressive. In the bid process, I'd have to look at your fund. It's in this community, it's set aside as a separate, separate fund. But here are the challenges. As, like I talked about, the EPA communicate with them. One of the problems with the EPA is they're always moving the goalposts, constantly moving the goalposts. So for example, if these tipping fees, the EPA wants to impose upon a solid waste location at which your trash is going. Then the fees go up. So you need to keep a very close eye on the contract. And in addition to that. My suggestion is that you go out for bids on your solid waste contract. You know, don't have the contract be too long because there's always something new coming down the pipe. Somebody else has opened up a new tipping station. So again, I don't know your numbers. I I guess by that question. Are you finding that the fees you're collecting are insufficient to meet the cost? Is that what's going on? Is that what drives that question?
We we didn't come up with the question.
So my guess would be probably yes. Okay. Why do counties and cities contract out their solid waste referring to garbage, right, services?
Well, I can take you back to the 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 bad old days. Solid waste was always done by municipal employees. And there were a couple of things going on, and that was that the solid waste employees. Might have times when they finish their round. And they were done. And the tradition was. You're still getting paid, you're municipal employee, you got paid three hours. And so you ran like the demon and got the trash off, picked up by twelve thirty to one o'clock. And you went home. And it began to dawn on municipal authorities that there might be a way. Full efficiency where you're only paying for the time at which the workers are going there. In addition to that, however. The the standard nature of service has changed and it went itself more towards. Somebody that could have cost efficiencies. For example, for a community this size, do you want to own all those trucks? And maintain all those trucks? Because to have efficient pickup, you need a certain number of trucks. And those trucks can be utilized in other locations by somebody who owns all those trucks. And those trucks can be utilized in other locations by somebody who owns all those trucks. Uh, in addition, the style of service has changed over time, I don't know if this could be an overhead, but. There can be all over the country where a person put their trash by their back door, like I came around, it looked like a golf cart. Picked up the trash and then put it out on the front, and then another group of guys came. Uh, then the technology's changed, you know, the uh the the trucks have these new loader systems where one guy. To be on that truck instead of two guys, and these little arms come out and dump the thing over and so on and so on, so on, so. Um, that's uh driven privatization uh in a number of areas. Uh, in addition, that's driven consolidation of services, providing services on a regional basis uh that way. So if the question was, why did that happen, I think those are the reasons.
What challenges do multifamily housing communities provide cities and how would you confront these challenges still in regards to the solid waste issues?
Yes, well, it's volume. Um, multifamily means more people that need a service. Uh, and and it's and multifamily is just not on solid waste, it's on other services as well, uh need for fire service or police or. Uh, whatever services there are, social services. Um, so uh in in terms of solid waste volume, it provides more and. Generally speaking, that can be addressed by having a consolidator trash with trash receptacles. Uh, where it's really the huge dumpster that's getting picked up as opposed to, you know, somebody putting something out independently. Uh, on their own, but you know, the more multifamily you have, the more pressure you have on services. Uh, and it it's no different with solid waste area.
The next area is in regards to finance.
Yes.
Uh, have you reviewed the city of Avon Park's annual budget? And if so, what is your impression of our financial condition?
Um, your financial condition is good. Your budget presentation is one of the best I've seen in the state of Florida, I'm gonna tell you what. First of all, your number's pretty good, your audit citation, as I mentioned, is it's very limited, but you have taken the time. To provide narrative explanations of why the numbers are what they are. Very informative to the public, it it borders on something that a lot of communities are issuing now, it's called a popular report. As opposed to regular uh annual report, popular report is designed to make sure the public can read it, not just see numbers, not understand what it says. Um, so um, you're 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 solid in that regard and you have good cash balances, that's important. Um, but as we all know, it just takes one crisis to, you know, to to wipe that stuff out, so. You need to have a good uh conservative uh finance director, and again, as I mentioned, you look at the audits. Um, you seem to have somebody who's really got a good handle on it, but let me say one other thing as relation to that. But that's not for the manager to just, okay, you're the financial, you you worry about the money, no, the buck stops. Here, like Kerry Truman used to say, uh, and um. Everybody needs to be kept on task and in relation to the budget and the report, one of the things we talked about, the management style, the workers, the department heads. Have to know the score of the ballgame in their own budgets, it's very common, municipalities, this guy's trying to street department, just does a job. Doesn't worry about how much money he has or doesn't have, just, oh, what am I allowed to do, fine, I'll just do my job. But they need to be aware of where they are as as well, uh because things can happen that could take that budget out of whack. Uh, and um, you know, there needs to be some kind of eye in from the department as as to where the finances. My philosophy as relates to financial management is the manager should know the score. Uh, if you were to call me up on a Thursday and say, hey, what's our revenue so far this year? I should be able to tell you the answer to that, or where we are in our expenditures this year, there's nothing worse than getting to the end of your fiscal year. And then your manager says, hey, listen, we're we're way out of whack, well, when did we start to go out of whack? Well, about four or five months ago, well, how come we didn't know about it, what can we do about it? So, um, uh, your reports are darn good.
All right, one quick question.
Please do.
Um, you said it was good, if you had to give us a grade, what would that be?
Um, it would probably be. In A or A minus with room for these reporting requirements, I mentioned your audit. You still have that one-site thing material with this. Uh, and in addition to that, the fact that you haven't participated in the GFOA thing. I'm trying to come up with an analogy, uh but all of you probably have had different business dealings where whatever that business is. There are places where you can go out and get an independent certification. I'm gonna tell you, um, you know, you belong to some kind of society, I would imagine, where you can get a certification, clerks of councils have their own. Process, uh and that's good from an educational standpoint, um so um. A or A minus, um, I mean, I've seen some really bad ones. Um, uh, where the report that's filed with the state auditor's office is only three pages long. And the other thing that you're doing is, uh you do have a private firm uh going through your um activities. In other words, it's not a government agency that's doing your audit, you've got a private accounting firm who has liability. If they make a mistake in preparing your audit, uh and they seem to be very much on the ball, so. A or A minus.
Uh, we're gonna skip the next question because we know you're well-versed in grant writing.
Okay.
Um, and uh the question following that is describe how you would keep costs down but continue to provide services to residents.
Okay. Um. I've been trying to lose weight over the last few months, and I've tried a few techniques. I know there's more that I can do. There's always fans somewhere, now, it doesn't mean that you're gutting budgets, what can be an example? Throughout your government, you've got copying machines. How carefully is somebody looking at the contract for the services of the copyers? Is it just the same company year after year after year, because you know, in Florida, you're only required to bid over certain, certain amounts. But that doesn't mean you don't try to find uh more efficient ways of doing things. Um, uh, years ago, when when I became the mayor in Euclid, they still had guys in the street department that were digging holes with shots. And we showed, they could save money by uh getting appropriate tractor with the mechanical digging material. Plus, OSHA was a lot happier with that as well, um, so there are always, there's there's always, in fact. You could do a complete efficiency evaluation, go everything with a fine-tooth comb, and after one year, say, we got this report, let's put all that into effect. And a year later, there'd be other inefficiencies uh that cropped up. So um, efficiency uh can be found, there are times you get down to the bare bone. And you can't do anything else, and then you're faced with a hard reality, which makes it fun to be elected official, how do you solve the problem? Uh, and of course, you've got to rely on the integrity of the people that are telling you this. You ever had a department say, we've cut out everything we do, we can't take it anymore, you can't cut our budget anymore? And do they have the integrity that you really know that's true? Sometimes the fan isn't in in supplies and things of that nature, it's somehow in utilization of hours. I'll I'll give you an example, something sort of um unique that I put in place in Newton Falls, and that was. Up in Ohio, they do a snowmobile, then, that's where the snowmobile crew, and it took them so much time to get all the snow off the streets. Meanwhile, I had guys and gals in other departments. That had their own snow plows in their apartments, they'd use that plow to take care of the driveway or the golf course or stuff like that. See, get your rear end outside and start plowing streets, and then everybody else, of course, the guys in the street department. Who were found that abhorrent, uh and then, but we cut our time in utilization for getting the um streets cleared. Uh, down to fifty percent of what was taking before in terms of time, also saved on overtime. Because the streets guys, oh, it took fourteen hours to do it, they get paid right, they get six overtime, that's great. Um, so, there 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 are ways with great. Get get two things for the issue.
Alright, so the next area has to do with our fire department?
Yes.
How do you plan to support the fire department in terms of funding, resources and personnel?
Well, uh, it's all about money, isn't it? Uh, you know, uh, there are times when you gotta go to voters and get certain lovies approved. And I've never been involved in a process like that where we didn't succeed, because I'm a door knocker. Knock on every door, talk to everybody, work with your uh fire department. Uh, and it's um, it's a crucial service. Uh, and it gives people comfort, also keeps their insurance rates lower. Um, so the process is similar to what I said before in terms of evaluation of finances. Uh, up in Ohio, fire departments are highly unionized, I don't know, is your department unionized yet? Okay, so that's, if you work with the union and you can, if you work with union in a collaborative way. Um, there are things they look for that you might be able to do that are relatively minimal cost. But sooner or later, the rest of life will catch up with you, health insurance being the main one. Uh, bugaboo, it's always going up, it's never going down, um, or other alternative ways. Uh, so, um, but in terms of support. Um, you know, it it's such an essential service, it's very similar to police services. And that is the time comes where you need to stand behind them uh and help them in doing their jobs and and you use the word support. Um, I'm a former municipal prosecutor. Uh, and so I know what it is like to be at a murder-suicide scene. Um, you know, one of the most dangerous things um a policeman deals with is going to a domestic violence call. For a chance, somebody's giving a hurt, we got a police officer, with firefighters, they're exposed to to dangerous situations. Chemical situations that they're not always aware of, so, but the safety forces. See, some of these do fall in sort of a special category of protection, respect, um, and and support. So, um, it's not much of a detailed answer.
Is is council good for that, for the second answer, second question or two about how you support emergency services?
Yeah.
Yeah, has it covered it, okay. Same with the fire department, how do you prioritize public safety, specifically the fire department, within the broader scope of city management?
Um, all your safety forces, think of it this way, your safety forces are the defense department, otherwise at the federal level. Don't have much of a country if you can't maintain an army to keep yourself being invaded and attacked. Um, that is the most personal connection you have to your constituents. Um, these are people that are gonna stand in someone else's living room in the middle of the night while they're in their pajamas. Uh, so it's an absolute essential part of, when we talked about, you know, what are the things you look at during your first period of time as the as the manager? Um, and I talked about attacking the grants, making sure the finances are important. But i- if you're not providing the most basic service, if you're not excellent at that, then no one around here is doing their job. If that's, if you ask somebody, what's the most important thing I get from municipal government? Save me in the case of an emergency, it saved my family, absolutely at the very, very highest level.
Alright, so the next couple of questions have to do with the CRA.
Yes.
Have you had any experience working with community redevelopment agencies? And if so, please tell us what your involvement was, and if not, tell us what you know about CRAs.
Okay, um, your CRA is called your community redevelopment agency. Um, the the CRA stands for different things, it's the same animal, uh in other places around the country. Uh, community um reinvestment areas, uh and I've written community reinvestment um redevelopment. Uh, agency plans before, um, and the reason they're so important is when you have a CRA. You actually have the opportunity to do things you can't do as a regular member of council. Um, for example, uh, if um a large company comes to you and says, I'm gonna build. This fabulous light industrial park, it's gonna bring lots of jobs and increase your revenue from the real estate tax, I wanna do this. Uh, and, but Jimmy Jones, who owns this land, I would. Uh, has decided that he wants to grow peaches there, the rest of his land. Uh, and you still want to figure out a way to get that land into the hands of this fantastic developer. Well, you're hamstrung by important things like the constitution of the United States, people rights of their property and so forth, so. And also by bidding requirements, when you get rid of real estate, you gotta bid it out publicly. So what happens if you finally get your hands on the real estate and you've now gotta sell it through public bid? Mr. Smith is gonna bring ten thousand jobs. But he is gonna be outbid by somebody else, maybe the guy with the peach farm comes back in again and outbids him. Your CRA allows you to go around some of these other restriction requirements, the fact of your CRA law here in this thing, you can give it to him. If he's gonna, but the, uh, which you couldn't legally do as a member of it, which, and and allows him to bring in these jobs, so. It's a fantastic tool, there are other powers that they have, uh but it's a fantastic tool, uh and you should use it to your benefit. Uh, and it doesn't mean, you know, it should be used as some secret way to get around the rules. But the reason the CRA concept was was created was to give you the flexibility to solve problems, especially in the area of economic.
What is your understanding of allowable expenses for CRA boards?
Um, it's not, uh, you know, a week at Mario's Spa and cruise ship. Um, it it's it's the basis, it's the basic elements, uh you can certainly pay members of all those boards, but. Um, generally speaking, you have people showing up on a volunteer basis, and it it's just a nuts and bolts expenses, maybe some clerical help. Um, and and some basic things in terms of office maintenance. Um, uh, the CRAs are authorized to do studies, sometimes that's important, sometimes an engineering study, things of that nature. But um, it's not the personal plaything of the members of the board. So, um, the expenses that are generally connected to and related to a particular project of benefits of the community, that's legitimate only.
Alright, the next group of questions come from council. Uh, can you provide examples of successful economic development initiatives you have been involved in to promote growth and sustainability within the city?
Yes, uh, I'll give you a few examples, um, and I'll sort of start back and then move up close to the present. Um, is anybody here familiar with a welding company, internationally known, it's on a stock number called Lincoln Electric? Spring of welding, buddy, okay, uh, they're the number one welding company in the world in terms of production, uh equipment. Uh, and even providing service contracts, and um. They had a small outpost in the community where I was the mayor under Strong Mayor, former government, and Don Hastings was the chairman of the board. And you always stand touches of businesses, you've 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 gotta hear the rumblings so you can deal with problems ahead of time. So I heard these rumors that they had recently purchased something like nine thousand acres. About fifty miles east of us, a little community called Mentor. And I knew that they were the market for brand-new international headquarters, which would add about three thousand jobs. And they were gonna build a robotics plant, if anyone's anything about welding, one of the big things these days is robotics where. Uh, a weld that would take you twenty minutes for a contraption over here, this robot goes. Zip, 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 and it's programmed, uh and they can do that in about five minutes. In any case, it looked like rumors they might head out to Mentor, so I went to Don Hastings' house. Cause I had a form of relationship with him, recently I went to his house, he didn't live in our community, but he had come down with this horrible cold. I also knew from personal experience that he loved Manhattan Clam Jodder, excuse me, New England Clam Jodder. So I drove to his house, went to one of the famous restaurants, got him some bread, I said, Dad, I gotta talk to you for a few minutes. Said, Dad, this'll be rude, I said, whenever you're you're thinking about being able to get from Mentor, we're gonna beat that. And we will come up with a better plan, and we did, we got those three thousand jobs, the governor came in, it was a big deal. And we got another thousand jobs from the robotics plant, um. Tell you two other worst stories, um, we also had an issue with a guy that uh wanted to build, move his office building into. Uh, a community, and he was just shopping around, it was only about eight hundred jobs, but that's a lot. Does it affect affects the value of your properties here for what you derive your income? And, um, but he had a certain address, they wanted the building to be, that was a nine-six-one. And this guy's name was Ed, Ed Crawford. Um, he's now was named, uh, under previous administrations, named Ambassador to Ireland, and very politically. I said, what's important about nine six one, he goes, that's a little cute, my dad owned the building. And he took me to the office every day, the address is nine six. Wherever I put this new new building with all these jobs, I want the address to be nine six one, so he found a great place in our community. Except for it's out out of sequence and on the wrong side of the street, I mean, number didn't fit in any way, shape or form. So I had meetings with the fire department, explain why this was very important and get them on board and keep them informed, then I had to give a local post office. Talk about people that dig in, finding the the post office people, they don't want you to sound around this. Go see the Postmaster General of the United States of America, so I flew to Washington. They had a meeting, all this to get nine six one, we got it, the jobs came in. Um, well, the last project I was involved in is just recently in Lake Lake Eagle Falls. Where we had a commercial development, and that brings a lot of real estate tax, and this guy wanted to build this fantastic. Um, strip real, uh, uh, commercial center, including restaurants and so forth and so on. Uh, but you didn't see how, where in our community we had a spot, I knew we had a spot. We had a spot that used to be a series of gas stations. And it had all kinds of underground petroleum problems. Anybody dealt with the other federal underground petroleum people, now they used to deal with. And, um, and so this site was off the list. So I went to the state of Ohio, I said, look, we really had to get this project, we don't have a spot for it, but this would be perfect. We'd like to get money to get rid of all petroleum, so this guy can move in. So we bought the property, uh, with the idea of getting rid of the petroleum and then making way for this new development. But before we bought the property, we found out from the state department of development that distributes the money. That this project wasn't eligible, they had recently changed the rules. To say that, uh, certain types of development projects, if they're next door, a former restaurant, so forth, weren't eligible. It was crazy bureaucratic, somebody with a pointy head came up with this new rule. Uh, and and I'm thinking, well, we need this money, we need the project. So I contacted our state senator, I said, here's what we're gonna do, we're gonna do a full court process. I contacted the governor, state senator, our state representative, and we all went down to Columbus in a meeting with the head of the development agency. I said, you know, this rule is is really a problem. And she looked around the room and so I think so, and I says, well, let me think about this a little bit. Two days later, they admitted the rule, we actually saw we could get the money, and the project is under construction. It's really great. Um, a lot of times, economic development, I talked about bird dog and grits, it's a matter of working hard. Knowing the people that are involved in the project, you have to know your businesses that exist already, but. Um, economic development is your lifeblood, what we have in this community, if everybody operates a business community. Stood up and said, yeah, we're going somewhere else. Um, uh, you depend on those, um, on those real estate, uh, that bore on dollars. Uh, and you can increase them with economic development. It's also good for your community, because even though you don't have an income tax, brings jobs to the community. When you bring jobs, great, what does that do? Increases your housing stock, value of your houses, and that helps your schools, so, it's all good.
What are your thoughts on having an assistant city manager and explain how the position would work in tandem with your role in fire?
Um, and look at the size of your community. You know, this might take me on the running, I know, I don't wanna sink in a battleship, but you don't need an assistant. City manager can even decide, now you do have some other price lines. That the first management skills, and you also kept the airport concept. That we talked about a little bit, and I've had experience in dealing with everybody, I was a consultant for a regional airport in northeast Ohio. And when I was working for the city of Cleveland, I also interfaced with the FAA, and that airport services over four million passengers in a year. So, working with FAA people, having said all of that. Uh, and I may sound awfully optimistic, I can do all this, I can do this and grants, economic development, all this, this isn't a forty hour a week job. This is a sixty hour a week job, uh, almost at a minimum. And it's s- s- some to some extent, seven days a week, which reminds me, I believe you're, wherever you appoint. Should live here, within the boundary of the city, my philosophy on that, and I would live here, is because you 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 need to have skin in the game. To the extent you're making decisions and evaluations that affect people. It, you certainly have greater credibility of all the people you're affecting is yourself and your own family. Um, so, I'm not convinced that you need to sit, now, do you need a an outstanding assistant? Uh, yes, of course, somebody to work with you to beat or alter ego. Um. So young lady who's in human resources, who sort of has facilitated my coming into the streets and so on, yeah, yeah. She's outstanding, and she, by the way, maybe she can be a great assistant city manager. Um, but, um, I'm just telling you that, um. Uh, you know, I've I've managed communities with six hundred employees and three hundred million dollar budgets. And an awful lot going on in terms of other price lines, but if you get good people, one of your departments, help them run it well. Then let them run it.
Alright, how would you motivate and inspire your subordinates to facilitate a rewarding culture all within the city?
Um. I think there needs to be a a spirit of positivity, and I'm gonna say something you probably won't hear many candidates say, and that is that. If you can create an atmosphere where going to work is a joy, a joy. Um, Denise, do you look forward to going to work every morning? I bet you do, I can tell, we've talked on the phone a few times, so it's a joy for you. Um, along with small employees, it's, it's, um, it 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 falls in category of this. Necessary chore they have in order to keep, you know, bread on the table. Um, a sense of joy and buy-in, that's why I talk about these staff meetings, learning everybody's first name. Um, creating this sort of an esprit de corps, where everybody takes joy and pride. In accomplishing things and and doing them better, making the community look better, solving problems. And the manager has to be part of that, and has to help that concept and that spirit permeate, uh, throughout your workforce. Has anybody ever heard of this phrase? That's good enough for government work, okay, well. Um, man, that that's, it it destroys the very concept of, uh, and and there are people. That otherwise you never thought you could do it, will actually take pride in their work, I've seen studies. Where the employees are asked, what's the most important part of what you get out of your job? Number one isn't what you get compensated. Number one is how you're made to feel at work. Do I, do I feel vacued? Um, uh, and and obviously you can play a role in that too. Um, the community this size, council people are sort of integrated into the community. Um, you probably know the names of half the people in your own, in your own constituencies. Uh, although I think you're all into that on a large basis, is that, is that correct? But I'm sure you, the, man, you got your regulars. Uh, and, uh, so the point is, as it relates to, uh, all the people that are working for the community. Is to pull together a sense of professionalism. And pride, you know, uh, if somebody's, um, trying to patch a hole in the street. And, you know, their shirttail is hanging out, and, you know, they got a boombox, and they're, you know. They're conveying themselves or projecting themselves in a way that is a positive, that's not good for anybody, so, um. Anyway, there's one way of responding.
People skills, also known as interpersonal skills, are skills that help you work well with others, give us a few examples of your people skills.
Um. Well, it means dealing with people on a one-on-one basis, um, when necessary, and intervening, so. Um, if Jim over at the Streets Department, uh, his mother-in-law buys. Uh, if I can make it to the funeral, I'll be there. Uh. If Lorraine in the Finance Department. Uh, he has a son who's playing in the state championship football game. I'll go to the game, one of the things I did in Newton Falls was, um, I set up. Uh, having, uh, our local, um, access channel, carry the football and basketball games, that never been done before. Uh, and a whole community sort of got in with the the spirit of things. Uh, so interpersonal skills, just being talking things out, communicating, just just like we're doing here. Talk to each other, looking at them, and I, well, I see a lot of things about personal interpersonal skills with the legislative body. Um, we should have lunch together sometime, so that you can sort of figure out what AM and what makes me tick, and I can figure out what your priorities. You know, um, I I've studied the, um. Uh, the Public Meetings Law, uh, and the Open Meetings Act, uh, here in Florida, to a great extent. Uh, and it doesn't discourage you communicating, uh, with your, um, with your administrator, your village manager. Uh, so I wanna build a rapport, um, I need to get straightened out sometimes. And I I wanna have a chance to pick up the phone, Mayor, I got a big problem, can you meet me at the cafe? Let I know I'm busy, but, but after that. Um, so, um, personal communications all the time, and we can avoid problems. Um, uh, and you can also deal with issues so that we don't form a position of animosity. With each other, uh, and that can happen inadvertently almost. So, uh, I think the interpersonal skills, um, are important, and my, you know, I I believe in sort of, uh, again, I don't. Follow this cats up of authoritarian, um, way of doing things, besides that, you're the authority. Manager should be, should be used as the the best tool that you've been able to acquire, so. Anyways, so my philosophy in terms of.
Any other questions from counsel?
We got them.
Uh, we can take a couple minutes.
What is your best and worst characteristic?
Um, my worst characteristic is, I'd say no, and I should say no, and I mean that in terms of taking on one more project. Um, my best characteristic is being able to find solutions to problems. That maybe aren't even within our jurisdiction, and that is, let's say somebody calls the city manager's office, it's. This poor old lady in the house next door, and she's got social security problem, so do I say, you know. You can call the city office, that's what, we don't do, you know, I say, you know what, I'm very sensitive to that. I think I understand what's going on, let me see what I can do, I call the congressman's office and say, hey, connect, and let's solve the problem. So I'd say, um, my worst is not saying no, and I should say no. Uh, in in terms of taking on other tasks, and and I guess my best is, uh, being able to be proactive. And sometimes creative, um, to to solve a problem.
Anything else from counsel?
I have.
You have a gentleman?
Uh, Mr. Cal, I had a question in reference to your, um.
Mr. Elizabeth.
I'm sorry, it's late. Um, in reference to your page, is it negotiable or is it different?
But it it it's negotiable, look, um. I live up in Ohio currently, but I'm coming to Florida, by the way, I'm on the interview list for three other community in Florida. Uh, my son just bought a house in Florida, and, uh. Such to understand, like, did all this work in Collier County, my wife and I made a decision, we're coming down to Florida, um. Cleveland in February is the last place on earth you ever want to be. Uh, and that doesn't mean it's gonna have a lot of great features. Uh, as president of the municipal league, so I'm, I'm a great public relations director when it comes to state of Ohio. But, um, and I've gotten to know Florida law, when I was in Colorado County, I was passing dealing with. Uh, municipal governments and different issues related to developers, one of the things I like about your community is you have avoided. A plague of municipal government in Florida, that is, you have a charter, or you're not a commission form of government, I don't know if you're familiar with that form of government. But the commission form of government in Florida, the commission members, you members of council, have quasi-executive authority over different municipal departments. So you might be in charge of the finance department, even though you're on council now, how do you deal with drafting and working with the council on a budget when it's actually. Your budget or the sewage department, something like that, so, um, you've avoided that. Uh, and so, that's absolutely negotiable, we're, I'm coming to Florida with my wife. In fact, she came down, uh, with me for this trip right now. Got your seduction, I can do it, maybe, so first of all, I think it's an executive session, so I don't know. Secondly, I don't think it's incorporated. Uh, so, yeah, it's, uh, absolutely negotiable, because I'm, I'm coming one way or another.
I have one of those. I would, yes, sir, uh, maybe something that happened in your life before you were twelve years old had such an impact that's changed your life to where it is today.
I can tell you that about that right now, in fact, you can read about it if you want to, if anyone wants to, I published a book in twenty twenty-two called Snowball's Chance. And the snowball's chance is about an election that took place many years ago in this community called Euclid, where I was elected mayor. And it was a community of about, um. I say seventy-five percent Caucasian, twenty-five percent minority. But the administration ran the government would not hire a minority person, except. And the waste collection is trash division. And, uh, we didn't have any minorities in please or fight, and they just wouldn't do it, it was, it was. I don't know, so, but it was, it was almost like Jim Crow running municipal government, and and so I ran. And, um, I ended the reign of that that group, that group was called the Coalition. Um, anyhow, that book's called Snowball's Chance, it's on Amazon. And, uh, I I can send you a copy, but I think the digital version is like six dollars or something like that. In any case, there's a chapter in there about something that changed my life in a very big way, and that is that when I was in the second grade. I had a dear friend, his name was Brian Doyle. And one summer, we became, became very good friends and very close. And we did one thing or another, and this is my best friend in the world, and I went back to school in the fall, the seat was empty. And it announced that he had drowned. At a hotel with his family in the suburb of Columbus. And almost nobody knew that Brian and I were friends, even his family. Uh, because he come over to my house or something, I don't remember going over to his house, but we were connected at the hip. And suddenly he was gone, and nobody talked to me about it. I guess they agree, tell some of these things, but we talked to me about it, a lot about it. Uh, and I can remember going to the funeral, and the whole school went to the funeral. And it's just just about arching through the field and so forth and so on, and I, I'm. I, they, they changed me, uh, as I mentioned, there's a, there's a chapter about it in the book, but it's, I mean. That was without question doubt, that was, uh, and nobody really, until I wrote, wrote about that, this book, nobody really understood or knew. Knew about it, but, uh, you know, made me think about, uh. While hanging by a thread, right, the people that we love. Walk out the door tomorrow. Treasure your family, can I mention something else that I've never heard?
Sure.
Okay, this didn't happen when I was twelve, but it it's it's another incident, it's also in that book, but some others that changed my life in a very big way. Um, when I was a brand-new prosecutor for the city of Cleveland. Uh, I got to know the police very well, and I would go out on runs with the police department, especially in the Second District of Police. Which, um, uh, was very much Hispanic, by the way, I speak Spanish. And I think that would come in handy in this job here, but having said that, um, so I went out on a run, and, um. This murder-suicide, I talked about, that happened that night, and I remember coming out of the scene. And there was a guy who had some problems, and whatever it was. Um, he shot his brother, he shot his sister, he shot his girlfriend, and then he shot himself. And the dramatic impact it had for me, to go to the scene of the crime. You know, sometimes I think everybody should understand what violence is about. The only thing you really understand violence is to see actual destruction of violence, but. It it's almost too much for people to bear, and I still to this day wake up in the middle of the night. Seeing the face of this guy who shot himself in the head, and his eyes, his eyes were open, he's dead. Seeing the face of this guy who shot himself in the head, and his eyes, his eyes were open, he's dead. And we'll talk about the rest of the courage, but, um. You know, you better have a couple of things to want in life, and what is your family and your faith. Are you gonna get through it otherwise?
All right, any, any questions for council quickly, we are, we are out of time, so.
Okay, just briefly, uh, you're in Florida, you are in ground zero in terms of FEMA. And I have some significant FEMA experience, and I want to make sure I touched upon that, because, um, we had a horrible storm in our community at one time. And the local director, FEMA is a very vertically organized organization. And reason vertically organized, executive standard part of the decision, it's that way because things have to happen quickly, somebody's gotta make a decision, it's gotta be implemented. So you've got a supervisory level here, and then one here, and one here, but this decision sticks unless this person will rules, but things can happen quickly. So we were tonight FEMA, after this horrible storm, and millions of dollars damaged. And I went all the way up the line, and finally got to the point where the national head of FEMA. Said, I'm the last stop, Mr. Lynch, I went, I said, well, who can overrule you? The president of the United States, it's the only way I can do it. Two weeks later, I'm sitting in the Oval Office, just myself and the president talking about that issue. And we got that money, uh, I'm bringing that up because, like a lot of these things I've talked about. Perseverance, due diligence, and good interpersonal skills, uh, can help, um. It helped get it done, and that's, that's true with FEMA, uh, especially, if you're in Florida. You're, whether you have had recently, you're gonna have FEMA issues, no question about, and FEMA has resources that most people don't think about. Uh, and you can tap into them and, um, bring them to the four or three constituents on a, on an as needed basis, and I. Good skill to have, so.
Very good, well, thank you for sharing that.
Yeah, certainly.
All right, thank you for your time.
Okay. These suggestions, something I should look at, we're not leaving until Monday.
What you should look at?
Yeah.
Ah, the Avon Park, why don't you take a look at the Jacaranda, uh, have dinner eighteen east, come town.
Okay.
I, you're here for one night. There, here, therefore, there might be.
All right, GPS to get it. And I'm on a runway. I'm, I'm thinking, I was gonna plane, skip out the land on here, so. Okay, it's nice being all good.
Okay, it's still hot, uh, we might as well take fifteen minutes or so, let's try to.
We're gonna take a fifteen minute recess.
All right, I want to take, uh, this moment to thank local thirty-one, thirty-two, Avon Park Professional Fire Fighters Union who have provided us with lunch. Uh, everything is out in lobby area, today's menu, pot dogs and burgers, it is buffet style, everything is self-serve. And thank you again to the Avon Park Fire Union, we very much appreciate it. We will take about a fifteen, twenty minute break, and we'll get back just as soon as I can.
Okay.
You're out there?
Well, Mr. Tenders already here, I don't, I was supposed to come bring him here, or should I have him?
How you doing, man? Better than just eating down. Oh, okay, oh, but, uh, there's gonna be there when you guys get done, take as much as you want, because we have like a whole cooler full of burgers.
Oh, great, yeah, much appreciated.
Sweet tea, and I think you guys have water, but.
Yeah, we have sweet tea.
Yep, we have unsweetened. Uh, yeah, we have ice, have some ice, yep.
Let me get some of that.
Thanks, Rob.
Appreciate it.
You fix something to eat?
Oh, I'll take something to go while I leave, uh.
All right, yeah, I fixed mine, I'm gonna eat it when I go.
Oh, did you?
Yeah.
Well, the old Russian plan, uh, was about, uh, he developed laws. So, he was in and out all, all the time, but he never, uh, he had. Things to build around. But he, well, it's literally the laws, I'm like, I don't know the new law. Oh, there, that's good as well. I didn't lie about it, but, uh, also, they had a little follow-up, they were getting the follow-up.
Potentially a ten year plan on that.
What is your philosophy of working with current and new staff?
I, like I said, we initially, we had to get to learn each other and see how things are going. Evaluate the processes that are in place and see if we're operating on best practices. I, I, I can work with anybody and everybody, but I expect them to do their job and to do their job.
How do you approach making decisions and solving problems?
I use a variety of methods, some of them are cost benefit analysis, some of them are slot analysis. I prioritize different things by assigning the value to them and I come up with those values based on different principles of. Prioritization, whether that's through strategic value or through must have versus. Have to have versus could have and, and, and won't have, you know. We also, there, there's also a rice method that you use out there for depending on how many people you're going to reach, what the impact would be for the, for the city. What the, what the confidence level is that we can either execute that particular item. And then what the overall effect would be and then ultimately using a variety of different strategies. And, and things we, I, I typically assign a, a, a value to that to determine. What priority is, is it going to be and it's the higher, obviously, the higher the value you give, the higher priority in the list is for that particular item.
The next areas of questions have to do with different departments in the city. So we're going to begin with code enforcement. How important is the role of code enforcement? How important is the role code enforcement plays in city government?
Code enforcement is, is very important to achieve compliance. It maintains your, your. Certain expectations within the, within the city. It, it, it helps reduce and mitigate some of your risks. That, that go on, uh, any, anytime you have an emergency, whether that be a fire or hurricane or. Uh, microburst storms that we have in Florida at times. Those code, those code enforcements keep your cities clean. They, they keep people honest and, and they keep your. Your buildings and, and infrastructure in, in shape so that it can withstand.
Are you a proponent of proactive code enforcement or complaint driven code enforcement?
I am a component of proactive enforcement, but I'm also a. Uh, com- or, or proponent of, uh, compliance. So it's not necessary. I don't think code enforcement should be a negative. Or a, a negative interaction. It shouldn't ever be a negative interaction and, and it shouldn't just be the iron fist coming down. We, we should try to understand the reasons that we're in the predicament that we're in and. If there is a way to work together to achieve compliance reasonably, that's the route that we should take. Now, obviously, at times that's, there's no other route. You have to drop hammer and it's, that's what you do.
Do you believe a code enforcement special magistrate should come from outside the area? So the perception of favoritism to some residents they may know is mitigated.
That is, that could be a little bit short. Um, it depends. The, uh, I think the special magistrate should be familiar with the area. It should be familiar with the community. Uh, should be familiar with the, the, the history of the community and how it adapts to the community. However, I also believe that if the special magistrate is in some way. Closely connected with the issue at hand, they should, they should probably either step aside or, or try to get. Someone else to oversee that particular proceeding.
All right. The next area is streets and stormwater. What are the key elements that go into a stormwater program and what benefits do they provide for our environment?
Well, your, your stormwater programs are, are collection runoff. You got, some of the, the key elements in that are going to be your, your basic engineering designs when you lay out certain. Uh, communities or, um, even existing communities to reevaluate the designs that are in place. Uh, obviously, Avon Park is, is, is part of a, a very high portion of, of Florida. Uh, have a ridge that runs down the center of the state. Uh, it is also part of the edge of what originally way back when used to be part of the lakes. Just, you know, everybody, it, the Florida's cheap flow from central Florida to south Florida. Uh, running through, uh, Cassini River, uh, Lake Okeechobee, uh, Myaca River, Peace River. Blue's Hatch River, uh, long, long down into the Everglades and, and ever the. The Everglades Restoration Project along with a lot of the watershed, uh, issues that, that Florida has had ever since the draining of the Everglades. Way, way back then is, is, is an interesting dilemma, to say the least, especially with all the development. So, with that being said, you, you have to kind of see how things are and where things go. And what the best practices would be involved with, uh, the, the managerial. Governmental agencies that have worked with, with, be South Florida Order Management District or the US Army Corps of Engineers or. Uh, all, all players involved in that.
Do you believe that the stormwater program should operate as a utility with its own enterprise fund? And what are the pros and cons behind your decision?
Although the stormwater itself should be its own entity, uh, it could be wrapped up in with, with wastewater. And, uh, because those two somewhat go hand in hand, um, but they, they should definitely have their own budget.
What measures can be taken to help prevent sidewalks from being damaged or broken?
Well, uh. You do, uh. Active measures through, uh, through enforcement of people either, uh. Riding equipment on sidewalks that they shouldn't be, whether that be bicycles, skateboards, motorcycles, uh. Just getting serious, whatever the case may be. Uh, you do passive enforcement through, uh, city ordinances that would, that would put forth those. Uh, rules and regulations as to what sidewalk brings forward, uh, and then, uh, and then. Try to mitigate some of those, uh, some of those issues that may arise with sidewalks through, uh, through landscaping. Um, wherever that, those particular landscape, uh, models may be, make sure that you're not, you know, planting a. A tree that's going to produce a, a giant root ball that's going to ultimately, uh. Force the sidewalk to come up and, and be damaged over time, um, so.
All right. The next area has to do with water and sewer. Describe your experience working with regulatory agencies and how you would convey the importance of compliance to the city council.
Well, water and sewer, uh, my experience with work with water departments mainly through, uh, water distribution systems. Uh, through, uh, uh, fire, fire mains and, and water mains and, uh. Those types of things that I have little experience in, in wastewater. Um, I understand the process of it. In, in the treatment facilities between the coagulants and the blocky lines and the different, uh, and then brain cleaners that end up using. The, uh, the, the more important parts of, of those, uh. Water distribution systems and things are that, are that we have the, the mains in place that are going to allow us to meet fire flow. To, to drive development, if you need development, because in order to have the development, you have to have, you have to meet certain fire flows. For that, in order to provide the protection that those, uh, businesses and residents would need. Uh, so that they would even be able to obtain insurance, um, through that. Wastewater, uh, treatment plants and are, are a, an opportunity. So that obviously whatever water distribution that the city puts out there, we, we charge the utility fees for those connections to the services. Uh, that wastewater gets ultimately flushed down the toilets and, and comes back to the city through sewer systems, uh, and, and septic. Uh, that stuff. Provides an opportunity if, if we're not already doing it. It, it may provide an opportunity for additional revenue. Uh, an additional revenue stream, um, and opportunities to, to. Maybe research grants and things that are out there in order to provide the funding to improve the infrastructure to, to achieve that.
Describe your experience with utility rate studies and what key factors go into determining the rate of water and sewer.
I have not had any experience with utility rate studies.
How does a right of way program help ensure proper planning and installation of utilities? And add any additional benefit you feel a right of way program provides?
Right away programs provide us the ability to utilize that section of land for, uh, for. Uh, water lines, for sewer lines, for, uh, underground electric, if we tend to do that route. Uh, it also provides us, uh, the ability to enforce, uh. Backflow preventers to protect the, the, the water distribution systems from being contaminated, um, and that. Allows the city to en- enforce and regulate in that particular area. And those amenities onto businesses and residential areas and be able to access and service those valves and all that. Without having to get special permission every time from a specific landowner that, that owns that.
The next area has to do with solid waste. What are the largest obstacles the city solid waste enterprise fund faces and how would you address these challenges?
Well, currently, I think our biggest issue with solid waste is, uh, is disposal of it. Um, that once it's run through the treatment plant, if my understanding is that there is, tends to be a. A, uh. Dry portion of that that gets shipped to landfill, um. That may also be an opportunity, uh, to, uh, generate revenue stream. Out, out of that versus just island in the landfill and, and creating more mountains in Florida.
Why do counties and cities contract out their solid waste in respect to garbage services?
Well, I would imagine that it's, it's typically more cost effective for them to do it versus the city to do it. Because if the city was to take on the actual responsibility of collecting the garbage, then that means we have to have all the different garbage trucks. We have to do the maintenance on the garbage trucks. We have to have the, the personnel and the, uh, to, to maintain the garbage trucks. Plus run the routes and, and do all that. It, it's, it's very costly, very costly.
Yeah, I think probably a more appropriate question on that would be, the city currently is picking up its garbage with some municipal employees. Would you look at or would you be in favor of contracting that out? It's probably more what people are interested in.
I got it. I agree. It, it is something that I would definitely explore and it really is, would come down to, uh, to the cost benefit of it. You know, uh, if we're going to save city money and ultimately we're, we're not impacting, uh. The community very much or, or even the city employees for that matter, uh, then that may be an avenue to explore. Uh, if not, then, and we're, we're currently providing the best service which we can provide. Uh, at the relatively cheapest rate, we stick with what we got.
What challenges do multifamily housing communities provide cities and how would you confront these challenges?
A lot of the challenges you get from multifamily dwellings are the density population putting, uh, multiple people in. A very close proximity of each other, uh, that tends to, uh, at times drive up crime rates. Um, it, uh, it also, uh. Can be an ISO, it can be a good thing. Uh, it really depends on the. Rules and regulations that are put in place for that particular development. Um, it is something that cities tend to do to increase density within their geographic area. Uh, so they bring more people in. It, it does create a lot of, uh, negative issues along with it historically.
In regards to finance. Have you reviewed the city of Avon Park's annual budget and if so, what is your impression of our financial position?
I have briefly glanced at portions of the city budget. Uh, it seems that, uh, at first glance, the city seems to be in a, a relatively decent financial position. Um, we are, uh. I, I think there's some room for opportunities for, uh, both adjustments and, and, uh, additional revenue streams. That would all take exploration, um, in time.
Describe your experience in writing, being awarded and managing grants.
I have written one grant. It was an assistance to a firefighter grant for fire protection. Uh, it was a grant that, uh, brought in. Around, I think it was right around six hundred thousand dollars for the, uh, implementation of. Uh. Blocking caps on fire department connections. Uh, part of the, uh, part of the national response framework provides for, uh, protection of infrastructure. Um, and those, uh, one, one of the issues that we were having, uh, within my jurisdiction at the time was, uh. Our fire department connections really either be missing caps, caps be broken, people would, uh, shove stuff in on trash and all that stuff. And ultimately that, that blocks the fire department connection and, and create an issue should the building be on fire that, that wouldn't be able to, to. Support sprinkler system for them to build. Um, so, uh, we, we opted to go with a, uh, with a NOX blocking cap on. All of our, uh, fire department connections and all of our fire hydrants. Uh, and that, uh, that was all provided through, uh, assistance of our, our, our prevention grant.
Describe how you would keep costs down but continue to provide services to residents.
Well, that's, that's going to go through evaluation of. Uh, methods that are being implemented currently, those, uh, those particular. Uh, cost of, as we know, they, the cost rise as it goes, um. We need to continue to look at, uh, areas that we are. Complete, make sure that we're completing best practices for what we're doing, that we're, uh. Doing everything in a fiscally responsible manner as much as we can. Uh, if, if there are, uh, other revenue streams out there that may be explored to offset costs. Or help offset costs, uh, that, that would be something that, that I would definitely be, uh, on board with. With doing to help keep costs down for citizens.
All right. The next area has to do with the fire department. How do you plan to support the fire department in terms of funding, resources and personnel?
Well, I'll work with the fire chief to determine what his needs are. Uh, evaluate what the current situation is with the fire department, uh, what levels of, what levels of services are we providing? Uh, what are our response times for, for those services? Uh, there are certain, uh, criteria and certain, uh, benchmarks that we should be meeting. Uh, uh, industry standardize for fire service. Uh, and then, uh, we would work with the fire chief and the fire department to, uh, and the union. If, if there is one, um, to determine what the best course of actions are for that and how do we fund it? Whether that's through, uh, grants or through, uh. Additional revenue streams if there may be that availability out there. Uh, there are, I di- I didn't find a lo- a lot of information on the fire department for the city of Avon Park, but, uh, there are. Uh, several, uh, revenue streams that are out there for, uh, fire service that doesn't necessarily involve, uh, raising taxes.
Can you provide examples of how you have supported emergency services in your previous role?
I spent, I spent a long career in emergency services, um, I spent, uh. Thirty years, that's, that's where most of my governmental background comes from. Uh, I, I started out as a volunteer fireman in, in LaBelle, Florida. Uh, I moved over to Lee County, uh, and, uh, worked over there as a fire, fire paramedic for, uh, many years. Uh, with the South Trail Fire District. Uh, I helped that particular fire department go from a, a. First responder fire department that only responded to fires and, uh, auto accidents and things like that. To an advanced life support non-transport fire department. Uh, and the reason behind that at the time was that the response times for the EMS service to our citizens within the district was, was twenty to thirty minutes. So we were spending twenty to thirty minutes on scene with, with folks that really didn't have the ability to provide any kind of cares. Uh, so, uh, I was brought in from another fire department as a paramedic, uh, it's the EMS coordinator. We work directly with the service administrator and the, uh, uh. Medical director in order to bring those guys up, train, uh, through the curriculum and bring them up to an advanced life support, non-transport fire department. Uh, we did that all under the same budget as what we had for, uh, the fire department previously. Uh, and, uh. It would, if we went from having, uh. Twenty to thirty minute response times for folks getting advanced life support treatments down to, uh, four to six.
Okay. How do you prioritize public safety, specifically the fire department within the broader scope of city management?
The fire department is, is very intricate to the city management. They, those guys, uh, are out there every day. You know, the citizens, they see what's going on. They, uh, they, they're having to deal with the. Uh, with the water distribution system the city may have. They have to deal with the, pretty much anything that, that. Uh, nobody else wants to deal with. It tends to get pushed off on fire department. Um, and, and they are well versed in, in a lot of, uh, areas in, in that, in that manner, um. They, they also, uh, can cost the city a lot. They, uh, the. The costs of, uh, firemen, depending on, uh, outfits and, and equipment. And, uh, even salaries, uh, can be, uh, a big chunk of the city budget. Uh, it is, it is an needed chunk. It's a symbiotic kind of relationship, um, for the city. Because, uh, if you have a well, a well-run, well-maintained fire department that has a, a low, uh. ISO rating on, uh, I think the city's is a three, um, they may be a three, three X. Um, that equates to, uh, insurance savings to the citizens and the businesses of, of the city. Uh, and it's actually a substantial, uh. Change or substantial savings in that. Um, one of, one of the other things that I did, not to kind of be long-winded on the subject, but anyway, one of the other things that I did. Uh, as the fire marshal, um, and division chief, uh, over South Trail Fire District. Was, uh, we, we had went through an ISO rating in twenty fifteen, um, and we were able to drop our ISO rating from a, from a four to a two. Uh, we did that through a, um, through a multitude of things. I mean, obviously you get evaluated on how your distribution system is. That's, that's a giant part of your score. And then, and then other things that your fire department meets, whether it's response times, uh, how close your, your closest hydrant is to a house. Uh, how far away you are from the fire station, uh, what are their response times, uh, involved in that? What, what type of trucks do they have? What type of equipment do they have on their trucks? Um, also part of that is being able to identify in your water distribution system. Um, how many gallons per minute that you're going to get out of that fire hydrant, uh, easily. So they should be able to identify that. Now, some cities do that through painting the tops of their fire hydrants, either red, green, blue, or depending on what the gallon is. Um, I went through our, uh, our county GIS system because we, uh, we use a. Uh, computer aided dispatch system where, where the GIS provided a layer of, of mapping and everything to the. Computers on the trucks to send us the call information and send us the, uh, what, locate where the closest hydrant was and all that stuff. Well, uh, I developed a, a map centric hydrant maintenance program with the city GIS folks. That allowed the hydrants, uh, through an iPad because our, our guys now did the hydrant maintenance, uh, on those hydrants. So it allowed the, the hydrant maintenance to be, uh, located on that map as a color. And that color represented, uh, how many gallons per minute they were, but you could also click on that hydrant. And a little box would come up and tell you exactly what the latest flow test was and how many gallons when it came out of that. And this did multiple layers of things because it allowed the, the company officers on the trucks to know which hydrants they were, they were going to, which. Whether that was a good hydrant and pass out when they go to a better hydrant, or even if that hydrant was out of service. Because if that hydrant was out of service, it would turn that hydrant color black. When it turned that hydrant color black, it would automatically send a notification to the, uh. Particular water utility system, because we had three different ones in, within my jurisdiction, but. It would send an email to them saying this hydrant needs service and then that gave them the ability. Because they had access to that GIS system itself that they could go in, fix it, fix or repair it. They check the boxes on it. It would automatically turn that back to where it was, where it was, says, I'm back in service. Um. The guy, the guys loved it because during the whole hydrant maintenance thing, you could turn that layer, turn, turn everything in the, in the city, uh, red. And then as they go through it, they can click on the hydrant, they, they do their, their painting, their, their maintenance, their flushing, their graphite. And all, all the good stuff they have to do for that. They check it all off in a box. They hit submit and it turns that hydrant from red to green. And they can, they can look at that map within their, within their zone or within their division and you can divide it up between shifts. Then all that good stuff and then they can all go out and do their thing and they can see. How it's accomplished and then you as a manager, you, you can look at that. You can see where we're at. This whole area has been serviced. We're going to be serviced in this area next, uh, it, it was pretty slick, but.
All right. The next couple of questions have to do with the CRA. Have you had any experience working with a community redevelopment agency? And if so, please tell us what your involvement was and if not, tell us what you know about CRAs.
Uh, chief, we did not specifically have a community redevelopment agency, uh, so I haven't worked directly with CRAs. Excuse me. Um, however, uh, I, I have worked in many, uh, communities and. Uh, and part of that redevelopment process is, uh, is making sure that. Uh, you're, you're reading all the codes and standards that go along with whatever occupancy type that you're trying to do, whatever. Uh, whether it's a planned unit development or you're, you're bringing in a resident, single family resident, uh, gay community or you're bringing in. Uh, you know, multifamily stuff, you, you need to make sure that those, uh, services are able to be provided. That they, they have the, the, uh, the water distribution that they need to, to provide fire protection stuff. They need to make sure that those, uh, those developments are not going to put undue hardship on the, on the city to try to provide those services. Um, you, you would also, uh, look at, uh, in, in this case, the, there's potential. Uh, for development outside of the, uh, incorporated part of the city, uh, that, that developer may, uh. May be willing to come into the city for certain, uh, trade-offs, if you will. Uh, and, and be part of an adulation process, you know, in order to grow, considering if that's beneficial to the city.
All right. What, what is your understanding of allowable expenses for CRA boards?
I, like I said, I've worked CRA work, so I don't know.
All right. Uh, the next few questions are from council. Can you provide examples of successful economic development initiatives you have been involved in? To promote growth and sustainability within the city?
Well, in the, in the city of Chicago, um, I was the incident commander for the Southwest border. Bus response from, uh, all of the, uh. Immigrants coming from the Southwest border of Texas, uh, governor had that was sending. Uh, six to, six to twelve buses a day, uh, to the city because they were a welcoming city. Um, so as, as part of that, um, I was able to work with, uh, with the, the. Mayor's office, the governor's office, the city council, fifty-three different pollerments. Um, uh, the Department of Human Services, Department of Public Health, um. IEMO, which was who I was actually working for, which is the Illinois Emergency Management Agency. Um, along with Cook County, uh, Public Health and Public Schools, Chicago Public Schools, uh, in order to provide the uh. The wraparound services, uh, interim housing, uh, sheltering and uh. Transportation. Along with food for. About eleven thousand residents that are eleven thousand at the time that I left, uh, for the city in that, uh. What we, what we did to kind of absorb that impact was to evaluate uh areas of the city that. Were being underutilized. Uh, there were, uh, the city of Chicago has kind of went through a recession period. Uh, so saw a lot of the businesses have kind of went out and whatever, so there's a lot of vacant, big box stores and uh things like that that we were able to. Uh, utilize and and turn into shelters and things like that, so that it didn't directly impact uh communities. Uh, at the time, COVID was pretty, you still pretty high and and. Going on with with all that stuff, so uh there were a lot of hotels that were. Uh, that had very, very, very low occupancy rates because COVID, they weren't being able to do that, so we were able to help out the. The hotels in the, in the city with uh. Being able to uh turn them into what was interim housing and that, that allowed revenue stream for them to sustain their businesses through that particular time period. Um, but we, we, we looked at. A multitude of different uh avenues to try to. Absorb those uh. Those people.
Right. What are your thoughts on having an assistant city manager and explain how that position would work in tandem with your role at fire?
It's a wonderful idea to have an assistant city manager. Um, that person uh would need to be and should be uh as. Well-versed and uh. Understanding the roles and responsibilities of the city manager as I am, um, should something happen. To me, that person should be able to step into my place and seamlessly provide the same. Uh, leadership and levels of of services that that I will provide at at that same time. Um. It also gives the city council the ability to have more depth within your uh continuity of operations that that. Like I said, should something happen to me, um, that doesn't leave you scrambling for uh the next person to to try to do the job. Um, they would be able to just seamlessly step in and that. Uh, that is one of the the big things for me as a manager that that I've always done and I, I, I'm a firm believer in continuity of operations. Across the board, whether that be for my job or for any of the department head shops, I think each one of them should. Whether, whether it be a named position or an actual creative position, there should be somebody. That has been mentored and trained into that particular position to be able to step in and I thought should we need them to.
How would you motivate and and inspire your subordinates to facilitate a rewarding culture to all within the city?
Cultural change is difficult. Um, we uh. We, we just have to be champions of it, you know, um, we have to mentor those folks to. Uh, provide their, their best foot forward. We are, we are all public servants that are here in the service of the public and the best interest of the public. And, um. And I would provide my support. And my counsel, uh, my leadership and all of that to the best degree possible to, in order to affect this.
People's skills, also known as interpersonal skills, are skills that help you work well with others. Give some examples of your people's skills.
Well, um, I, I can work pretty much with anybody, anybody. Um, I tend to. Look at things from a different perspective. Um. I generally don't come across with the answer that you would typically expect. I try to reserve my. Uh. My answers for. Quality, not quantity, um. I, I. I really prefer to think about the answers and the consequences of those answers prior to giving them out. Um. I, I am always in support of the council. Regardless of. My personal opinion on that, um, we are a team. I, I, you guys need a manager that's gonna be here to support the council. Uh, advise the council and give the council information, good or bad, that's needed in order for you to make a. Uh, informed decision on the, on the policies that you you lay forth. And then you're gonna need somebody that's gonna extra or execute the policies leading the room in the manner that you directed them to. And and that is me. I will give you my honest opinion. We may not always agree. I will. Respectfully disagree with you and and share my opinions and reasonings why I disagree. But ultimately, when we, when we come out of the, when we come out of the room, we, we are one team.
Any other questions from council?
What would you say is your best and worst attribute?
I would say my, my best attribute is uh compassion and uh leadership. My, my worst attribute is is probably compassion.
Wow.
It tends to, tends to uh. Come back and and bite you sometimes, but it's, it's always necess, it's always necessary. We deal, we, we deal in people. This is the people business. There's people from all walks of life, from, from all. Uh, areas of economic and social stature, um, they, they all reserve the same truth.
Anything else from council?
I have one question for sir, uh, seems like you're definitely qualified to, and as far as being a. Fire department expert, did you bother to take the time to go by and check out our department at all?
I, I did drive by and look at the department. I did not have the opportunity to stop in the street with anybody. Um. I have, uh, I spent the day yesterday kind of driving around the city and looking at different areas uh around Lake Latella. Uh, even the, the south side down toward Edgy, moved down towards uh Seabreeze, um. It's a, it's a very nice community, but there are, I see a lot of work that needs to be done. Uh, there are a lot of, uh, what seem to be a lot of vacant uh businesses and uh things that. Uh, need some attention, um. But I, I think that this place has great potential. Uh, it reminds me of the old uh Florida that I grew up in. Uh, I love the landscape, the, the live oaks, the, the stable palms, the. The caladiums and the, the croton, you, you don't see those anymore, you know, people put in all kinds of exotic plants these days. Um. But, uh. I remember Avon Park from when I was, uh, when I was a kid. Uh, I remember when this area used to be nothing much more than lunch clothes, um, when you could see the mock tower from almost Lake Placid. Um. Uh. Yeah, I, I've seen. Florida in general, uh, grow. Some good, some bad. Uh, I would like to be a part of what you guys have going on here and the opportunity to. Uh, make the city the jewel that it should be and the city a charm as you guys call it.
Long post, um, Mr. Tanner, is your requested salary, is it negotiable?
Well, sal, salary is kind of a, one of those touchy subjects, correct?
Mm-hmm.
I, I would, uh. Uh, I would tell you that I have been well compensated in most all jobs that I have. Uh, performed, um. Everything's negotiable.
Okay. Anything else from council?
No.
Do you have any questions for council?
You guys, uh, you guys have an interest in this strategic plan?
Absolutely. Yeah, we had another opportunity to bring it up to us, we don't have a, a mission statement, whether they want to call it a mission statement or a strategic plan, and we do have our, our five-year CI plan, so we know kind of. What we're looking at, equipment-wise, but certainly a.
Capital improvement period or capital improvement plan, if you want to do it like that.
Or.
But. As a, as a, as a city, as a city council, um. Avon Park should have a direction. I mean, we, we call it a city of charm.
Right.
Um. A little charming about it. And these are some of the questions that we would need to sit down and and answer in order to develop that strategic plan. We. What's the vision for the community? Five years down the road, where, where do we want to be? Where do we want to be and how are we gonna get there? That, that's the whole point in the strategic plan. Um, so we would, we would sit down, you know, what, what are our values? Where are, where are our community values? We'll, we'll list them out, uh, we'll sit down and figure all that stuff out. And then we'll develop a mission statement because that's gonna drive everything that we do. Uh, and as long as we have that strategic plan and we have those core values and we're, and everything that we're doing. Supports those core values or supports that mission, then those decisions are easy. When, when we don't, when we don't have a vision or we don't know where we're going or 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 how we're gonna get there, we, we, we tend to fragment and kind of fall off and we end up with. Things that we didn't want.
Sure.
I agree. So that would be one of my, my first and major priorities. Coming on as a city manager.
Yes, well, thank you for your time.
Well, thank you very much, sir.
Yes, sir, uh, Commissioner Taylor, Councilwoman Taylor, sorry. Very nice to meet you.
You need to speak too.
Yes, sir.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Sir.
Mayor, Eric.
Councilwoman Currie.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Bauer. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, that was our last interview. Denise, you wanna go over again what's expected of us for Wednesday?
Okay, so at this time, we can have open discussions if council chooses to. Um, you have your, your draft uh scorecard. And by Wednesday, I would just ask for a final to be submitted so that we can have it. It's gonna be on the agenda for the twenty-sixth, I think is the next meeting. Um, and then uh council would need to decide if they would like to select one of the three applicants. Or if they want to open it back up for further applicants to apply at that time. I mean, that's, that's the direction of and purview of council.
Sure. Okay.
So we're gonna submit this, pretty much agreeing scale, we're gonna submit it to you. How, how, how are we gonna be able to tell you whether we wanna. Select a candidate, move or move, you know, go to another direction? Are we gonna write that down on this?
That'll be in the.
At the next.
At the next council meeting.
Oh, at the next council meeting.
I'm just, I'm just taking your scorecards to put it all together and give each of you the total scores that came in.
Right.
Okay.
That's all, so you can look at them.
So we're gonna do the score and at the next council meeting, we're gonna tell whether we're gonna do it or not. And then. If we do decide on one according to our scores, if we just do. Then they're notified.
Yes, ma'am, they'd be notified and then we implement the background check process at that time.
We discussed.
Think we talked before about doing the top two.
Yeah.
So really we'd be picking our number one and then probably number two, and we do the background both of them.
Yes.
And just in case the first one doesn't work out or something.
And pretty much during our next meeting, if they decide to go Zoom, they would pretty much hear all the discussion on what we think of each candidate.
Yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And they get to chime in?
No, no, this is, this is, you know, the, the interview process is done.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the only, the only other option is, is council would like to call one back for a second interview. Um, then that would be handled much like we're doing today.
Can I just add that they would be allowed to do public comment if they want?
At the end, yes, sorry, yes.
At, at the meeting, yes, and so with the public, yes.
They would be treated just like a normal member of the.
Right.
Okay. Okay. Got a better understanding? Okay.
Any other questions?
So after we make the, at the meeting, we make our selection of the two. And they're gonna do their background check, comes back. How long are we looking at before we actually make a decision and say, this is the one that we've decided on?
The, the background check process from, from that point could take two to three weeks, depending on how many places they worked. You know, we have to do an extensive background. Uh, we're gonna be looking at many different things, including. Uh, we're gonna check social media. I mean, just because of the responsibility of the role, we're gonna look at everything. Uh, so it could take a little bit longer. Um, and then once all the background is done. Um, then that information will be presented to council and then you can decide if you wanna move forward at that time.
Maybe to take it up at our first available meeting then.
Mm-hmm. And, and Ms. Denise, between the time that we make a decision on a selection of a candidate and the background check and all that stuff coming in. And if a candidate were to drop out, then we look at our next high score.
Mm-hmm, yes, yeah, if, if you have your top pick and your runner-up.
So we, we need to pick a, a top pick and a runner-up.
Yes, if, if there is one out of these three.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Yep. Or if we don't like any of them, we can just go all the way.
Don't want any of them, then we start the process over.
Anything else?
I have one question that's not concerning today. The email that we received from Jerry about Facebook.
Thank you, yes.
Okay.
I'm around. Yes, so, um, Jerry had sent that over to be sent to all boards and commissions. And it, I, I don't know how much of it that you read, but it was based on a Supreme Court case and a ruling that was found on that case. Just as something to keep at the forefront of your mind, to make sure that, you know. People aren't being inappropriately blocked from being able to access Facebook pages, things like that, especially as a public entity. Your personal Facebook is different. It's not related to city business. It, it's more for, if you are acting as. A member of the, you know, public, you made a public page, then it falls under Florida sunshine statutes and we can't prevent people from the public. From being able to access that information.
But then I think the gist of it was mixing personal and.
Exactly, because it does happen. It, it happens a lot more than you would think.
If it's mixed, it's gonna be considered a public.
Correct.
So I, I can't just say friends only on my Facebook page?
No, if, if you're, you're personal Facebook page, if you're posting. For city business essentially, then you, you're basically opening up yourself to that.
No, don't make any comments about what we do in, in the city or at city council meetings.
Or personal opinions about people or, you know, just try to keep it copacetic.
Or create one that's for that purpose.
Right, right.
Oh, I have a question, but you may may not answer it. There's a newspaper article about something with the city. Is there some, are we allowed to post it on our Facebook page or not?
Absolutely. No, you're, you're allowed to do.
Well, they don't make any personal comments.
Nothing, again, as, as council members, we represent the city, so as such, we have to have a certain demeanor. You have to. You know, make sure that you're not making personal attacks at members of the public, because again, perception is reality. Right? So if you are being perceived to be doing that, that, that's not really a good thing for the city. So just. Keep it professional, I guess, would be the best good intention.
I just like to show things like Avon Park baseball wins World Series.
And that's totally.
Newspaper, I put it on my Facebook page. It's like, wait, wait a good game, or something like that, you know? But as far as a issue with an employer or something, no, I don't make, I make, I make no comment.
And if you want to, I know that very stand back to me because he, he often monitors Supreme Court cases, so I know it's. Very conspicuously at the same time as a certain thing, but it's not really really, it's just a heads up.
I'm glad you cleared that up because the way he worded it at the top. Um. Please send to appropriate board members.
He's, he didn't just send that to us, though.
I know, I'm just saying it's hot, I like to get brought that up.
And it could be too, because we also have a pension board, with pension boards. So they're not necessarily gonna receive that because they're not like you individuals who are out, meaning.
You like the officials.
Exactly.
And the case is not saying that you can't do it, it's just simply saying you can't exclude certain people from.
Exactly.
Also commenting, if you're going to make.
Can't block people or remove. Can't block people or remove comments just for the.
The whole lawsuit was over removing a comment from someone that they didn't agree with. That's what led.
And then again, it it falls under, you know, public record. That's another thing to consider.
As long as it's related to city business.
Exactly.
Well, if I put something on Facebook. And no matter what, somebody makes a negative comment that I don't like, can I not? I'm not allowed to remove that from my page?
How about you just call Jerry directly?
I think if you're making personal posts and you're making city posts. Separate, even if it's separate, and then you choose to block individuals that are commenting on any post. I think that was the whole gist of that case that.
In that case, the the individual involved made their page of of public entity changed, right? So when you do that. That changes the dynamic of what you're doing.
I it was one time, but.
Let's not talk about it. Just call Jerry and he'll explain.
Yes, sir, whatever you like.
Any other questions?
The meeting on Monday night is a special budget meeting at five. I I was twenty-six.
It's actually the special budget meeting could be August twenty-fourth. We're actually going to. I'm trying to coordinate a special joint session with the CRA for August twenty-sixth, so it would be at five. Then city council would be at six, and I know that's a lot. But we just want to get the CRA budget information out in front of you guys before we start going through the initial and the final adoption. It's a tight schedule. I'm sorry.
All right, anything else to give the city?
I just want to ask, did we, I I didn't see any sign-ups for public participation, but I wanted to give the audience an opportunity if they wanted to speak.
Anything else to give the city?
Seeing now, I intend to motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Saying opposition, we are adjourned.